Good morning. I will call this January 7th, 2021 County Commission Meeting to Order. Commissioner Compton, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move right ahead to Agenda Item Number One, Selection of County Commission President. And I nominate, I open the floor for nominations, and I nominate Commissioner Hudson.
I'll nominate Josh Compton.
Are there any other nominations? We'll move forward with the two that are nominated. All those for Commissioner Hudson, say aye, or raise your hand so I could tell who's voting. I'm voting for Commissioner Hudson. No one else? Okay, so that's one for Commissioner Hudson. Those for Commissioner Compton, raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Compton, you are our new president. Please take over the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Deb. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is selection of the Vice President and all other nominations.
I'll nominate Commissioner Hudson for Vice President.
I'll nominate Commissioner Stolper for Vice President. Are there any further nominations? Are your nominations are closed? All those in favor of Commissioner Hudson as Vice President, say aye.
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 All those of Commissioner Stolper as Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
Was that two, that Commissioner Hudson, three, two? Commissioner Stolper will be Vice President. We'll move to committee assignments. Okay, just for the new commissioners' benefit, what's going to happen here is current sitting commissioners, myself, Commissioner Hudson, and Commissioner Tab have, are sitting on some of these boards. Obviously, two commissioners are no longer with us, so those are open seats. If two commissioners want a specific board, the entire commission will vote on that, and the commissioner that receives the most votes will be that board member that's represented. So I'm going to start off with approval of bills, which I do. I have no problem keeping that. You need a laptop, it took a while to set that up, and it's essentially just clicking a few things each week. I'm okay keeping that if the other commissioners are fine with that. Any objections? So I'll stay on that one. Next, Board of Health. Commissioner Hudson is currently on that board. Commissioner Hudson, do you want to remain on that board?
Yeah, unless someone else wants it. It's a good board.
Do any commissioners want the Board of Health? Commissioner Tab?
No, I'll speak up if I'm interested, but I'm not interested in Board of Health right now.
Everybody good?
Tricia, you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Hudson will remain on the Board of Health. Building, Repair, and Security Courthouse Committee. This is, I guess, the committee Stephanie that-
It's a commission-created committee.
They meet periodically, right? It's not like a monthly thing.
It hasn't met in years, maybe.
Okay.
It, it was created by the commission when there were some issues between the commission and maintenance at that time. And so they set up a committee of, the sheriff was on it, there was a county commissioner on it, the county administrator was on it, but it, it hasn't been used in a couple of years. I don't think they've met. They may be part of, we always do the court security agreement every year, so the people who are on that committee would be invited as part of the grant, but they could be invited either way. Otherwise, that committee doesn't need them.
Okay, so based on that, maybe the commission can take a look. Should continue. Until then, are there any commissioners interested in potentially serving on it, but it has not met?
I was just going to volunteer as a member of the HLC. I think I'd agree with some cohesion.
Okay, so that's fine. Any objections? All right, Commissioner Hudson will be on Building, Repair, and Security Courthouse Committee. Next, the Liaison of the Charles Town Utility Board. So this is a non-voting spot. The county already appoints an individual on that specific board that votes. Commissioner Hudson is on that. I would like to be on it, unfortunately, I don't, I don't think I could make that meeting time due to constraints.
It's, I had the same issue with classes this past month or two.
Are they, are you able to phone in now? I think they moved locations to the new utility thing, and they had issues at the city council building with phoning in. So I think the ability to fall into a meeting is there. We can double-check on that, but are there any other commissioners interested in serving on that? You remain on that?
Yeah, my classes have changed, I've had trouble.
Okay, and just, just a note, you can call into any board meeting. You can exercise talking points, votes, et cetera, as long as it's on a conference call where you can talk and you can be spoken to. Okay, so I guess Commissioner Hudson will remain on that. Next, Community Corrections Committee, Data Report Center. So this is an open spot. No one's currently serving on it, Commissioner, or is anyone previously on that? Is anybody interested in that spot?
I'd be happy to, to take that spot. No one else is interested?
Any objections to Commissioner Jackson? Okay, so Commissioner Jackson will take the Board Center. Development Authority, that's also another open spot. Are there any commissioners interested in Development Authority?
I would be more than happy to take that position.
Anybody else? I, I'm not interested in that. So Commissioner Stolper with our Development Authority. E-911 Council. Remind me when this meets?
It's quarterly, unless, you know, something unusual comes up. I'm fine with continuing to serve on it unless somebody else has a burning desire.
I mean, I, I've been the last few years on the same boards. I'm kind of interested on 911 as well. Are there any other commissioners interested on 911? Did you want to hand that over, Commissioner Tab, or do you want to-
If you want to take that on, that's fine, Josh.
I appreciate it. So myself will be on E-911 Council. Extension Service. I know Jane, Commissioner Tab, you've been on this for a while. I think you probably did a really good job on Extension Service. Are there any other commissioners that would like Extension Service? Okay, are you okay with remaining on Extension Service?
Yes, I would like to continue to serve on that committee.
All right, so Commissioner Tab will remain Extension Service. Your, Commissioner Tab's also on Farmland Protection. Any, would you still like to serve on farmland?
Yes, definitely.
Any commissioners object? Okay, Commissioner Tab will remain in Farmland Protection. Jefferson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's an open spot. Anybody interested?
I'd be more than happy to take that board.
Any other commissioners? Objections? Commissioner Stolper will be on Visitors Bureau. Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency Fire Rescue. So Commissioner Tab currently is on that spot. Commissioner Tab, do you have any interest to stay on that spot?
I'm willing to let someone else take that on. It's kind of, they're interconnected, not only the ESA meetings, but Fire and Rescue that are on the first Tuesday of every month in the evening. They kind of go hand in hand.
Okay, so they're essentially two separate boards, essentially?
Right.
Just all day, I mean, I'd be interested in Fire and Rescue. I know Commissioner Jackson was the previous Vice President of the ESA Board prior to her resignation.
I would very much like to stay on that board.
Obviously, it's the county commissioner that represents. Commissioner Tab, are you inclined to, you okay with that, or?
That's fine with me.
Okay, so Commissioner Jackson will be on the ESA Board, and there's no objections. I would like to fire Rescue. Okay, so that'll be it. Historic Landmarks, Commissioner Hudson is currently on that. Anybody else? Do you want to remain on that? You did? Anybody else like Historic Landmarks? Okay, Commissioner Hudson will remain Historic Landmarks. Homeland Security, L-E-P-C. Stephanie, can you give out, the new commissioners a quick rundown of exactly what they do?
So that is the board that, the Homeland Security Emergency Management, that's their kind of like government board, but similar to the E-911 Council for, for the comm center. There's community members, there's a commissioner. They used to meet at IHOP, at 7:00 AM. But now they are meeting via Zoom, or actually, they're using our code of meeting to meet. So they basically have input on issues related to emergency management and security.
It's also, they make quarterly?
Quarterly. Homeland Security, well, with what's going on with daily updates, not so many meetings, but I would like to stay on that. That's Homeland Security in the Local Emergency Planning Commission. They do the, the big disaster planning, trying to plan for any disaster that we can think of. So I would like to stay on that one unless somebody else wants to do it.
I'm interested in that.
Commissioner Jackson was interested in that. There's two commissioners interested here. We're going to have to vote on this one, two of them on it. So, sorry, my computer just shut off. Okay, so basically, all those in favor of Commissioner Tab remaining on this, say aye.
Aye.
All those, Commissioner Jackson taking this over, say aye. Commissioner Jackson will be serving on the homeland. Legislative liaison, the county commissioner does this. Again, can you give the new, new commissioners?
I've been doing it for the last couple of years. Basically, research all the bills that are out there, think that would impact the county commission, and then if there is a need to reach out to the legislature, they could reach out to the legislature if it would impact Jefferson County, and they're going to try to influence them. It's usually our legislative delegation. An example would be, we have the annexation statute last session that impacted Jefferson County. We kind of reached out to our legislature legislators to say, these are the changes we'd like to see. I've been doing that. I don't mind if a commissioner is, I'd be happy to, but I usually provide, if you remember during the legislative session, I'll provide you, these are all the bills that impact counties. Let me know if there's something that you'd like me to reach out to legislature on.
Yeah, how, okay, so just the new commissioners, these boards can get very time-consuming. Don't take on more than you can handle. So I don't know how much time is invested on your end with that and a million other things you're doing. Is there any commissioner that's interested in doing that? So basically, the updates too, I mean, once the session starts at the legislature, you're going to follow the bills, track the bills, see what they're doing, how it affects the counties and so forth. I don't know if anybody's interested in doing that.
Basically, what Mrs. Grove is doing is just, if something comes up, she's going to bring it to our attention. So you're, you're just a watchdog.
Initially, I will say, here are the county bills, and then if something new comes up, here's a new county bill, you guys say, yeah, we need to watch this, or we need to contact our legislators, and either oppose it, or write a letter in favor of it, or do something like that. And then I kind of track that bill throughout the legislative session.
Yeah, and I, I think it's fine just to immediately miss Grove.
That's fine with me.
Because you're going to, it, it's got to come, if there is something, and we need to-
Oh, yeah.
Or object to it, bring it here.
I'll do anything less than people tell me to. So, yeah, that's, I mean, that's usually how it works, and typically, you know, if a certain commissioner has a relationship with a, with a, with a certain legislative legislator, they might reach out also, but typically, I kind of shepherd through that process. These are the bills going through the legislature that impacts us.
Sure.
Commissioner Tab, are you okay with the county administrator remaining on that?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay.
And anything kind of helps with that, I don't want to be, you know, as well.
And if it gets too much of a burden for you, but no, I don't want you to be overwhelmed, Stephanie.
Yeah.
MPO Interstate Council, AGP MPO. Again, another open spot. This one, Stephanie, is another one that I think needs quarterly.
Yes.
I don't know how often they've met. This is, this is one that's not going to be extremely time-consuming if someone's interested. We're going to have to get some more clarification as to when they're meeting and how often, but I do not hear much about this one.
I think it's quarterly, and I'm pretty sure they have a meeting virtually.
Is anybody interested in jumping on that one? Commissioner Tab, are you interested in that one?
It's, I think this is one that should be filed on Region 9.
Yeah, that's what I said, very soon.
Okay, so that-
And then it is related to Region 9, so it's all the people who are on Region 9 are also on that.
Oh, okay. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get-
I'll, I'll take this board. I'm sorry, I didn't realize which was later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Stolper, you have that board. Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, Commissioner Tab, would you like to remain on that board?
I'm fine with that. I'd like to stay.
Any objections? All right, Commissioner Tab will remain on EPTA. Parks and Rec, so I sit on that board. I think I'm the only one with a little kid. I don't have a problem staying on Parks and Rec, unless someone else would like it. Okay, so I'll remain on Parks and Rec. Planning Commission?
I'd be happy to be on that board.
Any objections?
I, I would also like to serve on that board. I've been a commissioner a long time and never served on the Planning Commission.
Are there any other commissioners interested in that board? All right, we're going to have to vote on this one as well. All those in favor of Commissioner Stolper, you want to be on the Planning Commission, say aye. All those opposed? All those in favor of Commissioner Tab to want to play in Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All right, vote is four to one. Commissioner Stolper will be on the Planning Commission. Region 9, Commissioner Nolan was on that. That's an open spot. Is anybody interested in Region 9?
If I don't want hands, I'll take, I will not be in the Region 9 also.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Stolper will be on Region 9. Solid Ways is currently on that. Believe it or not, that's actually a very active board. We just had a truck nail the new trailer twice in the past month or so. Other things going on. I'm okay staying with it. Jane, I know you're much closer than I am. I don't know if you're interested in just being able to go across the street, but I'm willing to stay on it, but if another commissioner that's in a closer vicinity to the board would like to take it, I'm more than happy to hand it over.
No, thank you. We have history there, and so I think it's better I'm not on the board.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll, I'll stay on that board. Water Advisory Committee, Commissioner Hudson is on that. Are you interested, remaining on that?
I can stay there until someone wants to.
Anybody else want Water Advisory?
I, I would like to be on Water Advisory.
Any objections? All right, Commissioner Tab will now be on Water Advisory Committee. And last, Workforce Investment Act Liaison. I've not been on this board, I have a little, I need some more clarification on this, Stephanie, if you can give-
I also want to.
Workforce Development Investment Act.
You know, I don't know about that.
Okay, we're going to have to get some more clarification on that.
Can you get by you please?
We were on at once, and, or, I remember driving down Corvater H, and it was like a stand, and we just learned about grants available for workforce.
And they haven't met?
But it was-
I have not heard any update from them.
It was like four years ago now, so.
So it's for projects, or it's grants for hiring workforce to complete?
I mean, we-
I don't mind taking that.
Any objections to Commissioner Jackson taking this?
Okay, he's working for you.
All right, so Commissioner Jackson will take Workforce Investment Act. All right, I think we're concluded from the board committee assignments. Just get in contact and find out when you meet. The calendar of meeting dates and times, I believe, are in the agenda packet. You should, some meetings coming up fairly quickly, so just make sure you're attending those either in person or virtually. They're very important. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of minutes for December 17th, 2020 regular meeting. And I'll move, approve the December 17th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Those are approved. Next, we'll move to approval of requisitions for January 7th, 2021.
We've approved the requisitions in an amount of $38,762.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. Next, we'll move to approval of accounts payable, first is December 22nd, 2020. That's a move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, this is approved. Next will be approval of accounts payable for December 29th, 2020. So move. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
I think we should say the amounts, just for the public to know the amount of money we're spending.
Okay, and just so the public is aware, those amounts are in the agenda packet, but I, I don't disagree. So for December 22nd, the amount that was approved was $261,472.75. And for this motion for accounts payable for December 29th, 2020, the amount is $421,363.32, which are all outlined and itemized in the agenda packet if the public is interested. Any further comments on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of accounts payable for January 7th, 2021. I'll move, approve accounts payable for January 7th, 2021, in the amount of $1,124,162.53. There any discussion on this?
Just want to point out, there's some disbursements in there.
Any further discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next, we'll move to approval of manual checks, first is for December 23rd, 2019, or, is that supposed to be 2020? There's just an update on that. It should be re, it's December 23rd, 2020, not 2019. I'll move that in the amount of $289.73. Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Next is approval of manual checks for December 30th, 2021. It should be 2020 as well, not 2021, so that, that needs to be updated. I'll, I'll move that as well for $15,000. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of manual checks for January 8th, 2021. So move. So that's in the amount of $73,973.50. There a second?
Say.
All the, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next up is approval of the December 24th, 2020 payroll.
I'll move payroll in the amount of $283,178.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Do we have any announcements?
I do not have any announcements today.
Okay, we'll move to public comments, and just a quick note, I realize there's 20 minutes bracketed here. I don't think we've ever hit that. Just from my perspective, I don't think we need to have a time constraint for public comment with the community, so I'd like to see that axed.
Typically, what do you do, you think 20 minutes would have left again?
Well, yes. I mean, we, if we run into issues, we'll reassess it, but I think constraining the public, making public comment is not a good thing.
Me, in accident, when we had a large volume of public comment.
We've not seen that for the last year.
You still want people to be with us just for three minutes?
I think three men, the three men threshold has been in existence for a quite a time. So I don't think we should change that. I think that's plenty of time to put forth your viewpoint and opinions. And if, if the public wishes to make more comment, they can request it in the agenda for further discussion. Do we have any public comment for today?
We received some written public comment, and also, there are beginning to be attendees meeting virtually. If you would like to make public comment, you can use the duration icon, or you can send me a message, and I will unmute you, and you'll be able to make public comment. So there are two ways. The little hand icon, if you click on that, you'll be able to read public comments, and then also, you can send me a chat message, which if you're pretty good that way, I will unmute you when you commit into favor or deny public comment. So while we're waiting for people who may want to make public comment, I'll go ahead and read the written public comment. The written comment that we received is from Mr. David Tab. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident slash taxpayer protest the Jefferson County Commission hindering residents slash taxpayers from recorded public comments. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident slash taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any non-essential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FIOA of the 12 proposals slash bids connected to the proposed courthouse meeting complex. It appears the JCC has failed to properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. If the JCC was not getting properly to approve the minutes, then the commission was not properly supporting them. The Jefferson County Commission no longer attaches submitted public comment within the county commission meeting. Apparently, the county commission has proven true, and continues to hide their decisions by not releasing the information and/or the comments challenging their authority. An example is case 29969, that appeared on date in Cochran. The county commission and their attorneys have been more than two years following the TCR trial court rules to get this case dismissed. Notice of appeal has already been filed with the West Virginia Supreme Court. Judicial investigation convinced it is also been verified, along with the West Virginia State law, improper procedural protocol. It appears the court has learned this from the county commission. Agenda 3, Angie Bay's successor, Honeration. This agenda item has no documents attached to it for the public to review. What is in the agenda packet? What is in the agenda packet is Michelle Gordon, Finance Director, FY 2020 budget charge, of which indicates an eight-and-a-half percent decrease in market value for FY 2021. Everyone should request their residential reviews for 2019, 2020, and year 2020, 2021, new assessment year. Compare the two and make sure your property value has decreased by eight-and-a-half percent. Agenda 4, WDOH Introduction and Update. This is to make sure that everyone knows about the Governor's SWOT Safety with Action Today program. This was approved in 2018, and only now has anyone known anything about it. Supposedly, you can report a safety indoor problem with highway issues that will be verified within 24 hours of response. Here is the information to contact with the new SWOT. Let's see how it's worked. Agenda 6, Douglas's Throckwell Citizen Requesting Reversals for Training Speed and Cost by Volunteed in Cases CC 192020C125 and Number CC 192020C132 through 137. These cases were citizens complained against the county commission to address the language of planning discrepancies to ensure the consistency of the comprehensive plan. Their bill is $19,000 plus, and have requested $15,000 from the commission. I would keep an eye on this to see if I can request the same reimbursement. Russell Burgess, Department of Internet Technology. This is a request for $9,485 marked as equipment. It said the project description states it's a software and training to be provided by SolarWinds Network, but that does not have a software in the territorial contract description form, that lists no planning, no equipment, no training, and no exercise. How do you make this up? Training provided with no contractor owns project, now make the deal for SolarWinds Network. So could this be another way for the county commission to create itself behind the scene? Correspondences. Letter from the West Virginia Public Service Commission, Ray Disbursement of E-911 Fire District. A check for $293,077.67, E-911 dispersment for September, October, and November 2020, was mailed by the West Virginia State Otters' Office. What pocket is this money going on? The public reserves the right to call out public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the public. The government's order to stay at home to protect the public's notice and comments without reinforcement provision. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all losses, including the government. It is hard to be safe if the current county commission is having an accident."
Okay, a quick thing also, if there's no objection, if we're going to constrain people at three minutes-
Yes.
-for verbal comment, we need to do a timer for written comments, and as, so long as the individual reading the comment is reading it at a pace that is acceptable, it needs to be stopped at three minutes as well.
I thought that as I was reading this one.
So, going forward-
I'm a pretty fast reader, so I don't think there could be any objection.
Going forward, there's no objections, we will use a timer as well for written comments, so long as being read accurately and in a proper fashion. Okay, so let's move forward with that, going forward. And we encourage written comment, just, we have to be fair, if you're verbal or written, be at three minutes. Are there any further public comments?
Or has that changed? A lot of staff on, I don't know, definitely, even if you have the, you know, there are kind of those waters. So most of our attendees are staff today.
Okay. And just for the benefit of the new, two new commissioners, public comment is the public's time to comment and give us their opinions. Do not interact back and forth or answer questions.
We need to have a public comment.
Yeah, you can, you can update, you can look into that, but we're not going to engage during public comment.
And that is neutral.
So we'll move to the presentations, agenda item number two, Commissioner Tab, Staff Participation in County Commission Meetings.
Yes, I, I'm hearing some buzzing. I don't know if it's on my end or your end, but anyway, I will proceed. I'm very concerned with the commission meeting in person. That staff will feel compelled to make their presentations in person. You do have the authority to hire and fire folks. And they may feel pressure to present in person. And also, I do not think it is wise at this time with our county red, very high infection rate, for anyone to be meeting in person. And I asked Dr. Reedy his opinion on the current circumstances. And I'm going to read an excerpt from what he sent back to me. Because I'm very concerned about our staff. We have staff with, you know, conditions I can't reveal that I know of personally, and you're putting them at risk, I believe. But this is from Dr. Reedy. "Despite our desire to return to the pre-pandemic static status quo, it is best to meet remotely whenever possible. Whenever people come together, there is a definite chance of a person in the group being asymptomatic with an active COVID-19 infection. Unfortunately, some symptomatic people also feel obligated to attend events and do attend despite the knowledge that they could infect someone else. Especially in this phase of the pandemic, encouraging, having others to attend in-person events increase the risk of contracting or transmitting the virus. There is a concern that we will see further increase in transmission due to recent holiday travel and emergence of a viral strain that is more easily transmitted. Vaccinations are expected to eventually decrease the spread of this virus and the number of deaths and disabilities. But this benefit is not likely to be evidenced for a few months. For now, physical distancing, avoiding gatherings, wearing masks, good ventilation, and sanitizing are the ways to decrease the spread of this disease."
Anything further on that, Commissioner Tab, or anybody else's comments?
Well, I'm going to put a motion on the floor and then we can have further discussion. I move that to protect the health and safety of our staff, staff shall participate in county commission meetings remotely until the West Virginia County Alert System places Jefferson County in the green.
I'm going to second it for discussion purposes. I have a few comments here. So one, Commissioner Tab, I mean, we discussed this at our last meeting of 2020. I kind of don't understand why this is being brought up. From what I understand during that meeting, we made it quite clear that any staff member or commissioner did not have to appear in person, nor would they be punished for choosing to be virtual. I certainly am not suggesting that staff members uncomfortable with meeting in person need to come here for fear of losing their job. Absolutely not. And no staff member that is here today, or commissioner that is here today, has been forced to choose to be in person. Any commissioner prior to COVID could call in, and I've done it myself numerous times over the past four years. And any staff member can call in. So that's my opinion as a single commissioner, but there should be no fear of job loss or retribution or any of this thing of the sort if you choose to present virtually. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in there, but the safety of staff members and fellow commissioners is our number one priority.
I want to reiterate what Josh just said. I agree with that wholeheartedly. And certainly, if a staff member does not feel comfortable, they don't have to be here. The fact that Commissioner Tab would say we would fire somebody for not showing up in person is absurd. So I'm okay having the policy like it is. If they want to come in, they can come in. It's their choice and their choice of.
But to clarify, I didn't say you would fire someone, but I think this staff knows you have that power. And, you know, I've seen people fired from the county commission very, very publicly. So I know it can be nasty, but I'm not saying you're going to do that or that you would do that, but that I believe staff would feel the pressure. That's what I'm trying to express.
Commissioner Tab, I honestly do not know where you think that's coming from, because we talked about this at our last commission meeting. And we all agreed, I thought, that staff safety and commissioner's safety was our utmost priority. So I mean, I hope staff is listening. If they're not, I hope they watch this tape. Under no circumstances is there any issue with making presentations virtually or doing anything else virtually for any commission meeting or any board meeting and so forth.
Let's get to the point. We have four commissioners here, but we also have a commissioner virtually. Jane, you're setting the example that you can come virtually.
I agree. Do you have staff in the room with you right now?
Yes, but they have been given the opportunity of remote virtual engagement to the commission meetings and they have chosen otherwise. In fact, I actually even offered to push them button for the recording. I still keep that offer. So if that needs to happen and I choose to come in person, I'm more than happy to do that so staff members don't have to come in. Is there any further, any further discussion on this motion? I'm going to suggest we, I'm going to propose an amendment to the motion. So the motion is currently staff shall participate. I'm going to propose an amendment, staff may participate if they choose to do so in the county commission meetings remotely. Would you take that amendment, Commissioner Tab? They absolutely can remotely go in, but if they would like to come in, that's their choice.
No, I will, will not accept the amendment. I think you are putting staff in danger.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we'll vote on this, but just to reiterate, my concern here is to make sure everybody is safe and can make their own decisions as adults. So any further discussion here? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. So motion fails four to one. And I'm going to propose another motion to protect the health and safety of all staff. Staff may participate upon their own decision and choosing and will not be retaliated against or have a fear of job loss at any county commission meeting remotely until a given point in the future is determined that everything is safe and we will reconvene in-person meetings 100%. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Is that opposed, Commissioner Tab?
No, it's just my cat walking in front of my screen right now. I voted for your motion.
I think you blocked your voice prematurely. All right, so motion passes unanimously. So staff can participate virtually. I encourage it if they have any ounce of issue. It's perfectly acceptable. You'll see me do it at times, I promise you that. So we'll move on. Next will be exoneration. I recognize the new commissioners may not have much background in this. Is your assessor Angela Banks on?
She is.
Can you hear us, Ms. Banks?
She's still muted. Angie, you're still muted.
Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. I have four exonerations to present if you are ready.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, the first one is in our 2018 Personal Property Book, Shepherdstown District. The taxpayer filed a 2018 personal property form. However, they also filed a 2018 supplemental form, which created two bills. The assessed value is $20,900, tax amount $491.08, ticket number 317499. The applicant is Lawrence and Elizabeth Toff.
All right, I move we approve exoneration, ticket number 317499 as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved.
Okay, this one's in our 2020 Personal Property Book. Taxpayer did not own the 2002 Chevy Suburban on July 1st, 2019. Assessed value is $1,600, tax amount is $36.42. The applicant is Heidi Griffin, ticket number 307759. And she did bring in proof that she did not own it.
Move we approve the exoneration of ticket number 307759 as outlined by the assessor.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Okay, and this one is in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Harpers Ferry District. The taxpayer, well, actually, the 2007 SOB was incorrectly assessed. It was over assessed. The assessed value difference is $10,800, tax amount is $245.81. The applicant is Brian McBean, ticket number 308303.
All right, I move we approve the exoneration, ticket number 308303 as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Banks?
This is the last one. It's in our 2020 Real Estate Book, Middleway District. The property was erroneously assessed in Class 3, and it should have been assessed in Class 2. Assessed value is $84,600, tax amount is $962.75. Ticket number 22742. The applicant is Richard and Rebecca, Richard, no, excuse me, Gordon and Rebecca Richardson, sorry.
All right, I move we approve the exoneration, ticket number 22742 as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. All right, next up on the agenda, number four. Mr. Lee Thorne, District 5 Manager, West Virginia Department of Highways. WBD DOH introduction and update. Can you hear us, sir?
Yes, sir, I can.
How are you all doing today?
Oh, doing, doing fine. How about you?
Not too bad. So I see we have, I'm just going to let you have at it if there's anything you want to make preliminarily before you go through presentation.
Well, actually, what we just want to do is take an opportunity to get with all of our county commissions. In the past, we've been trying to do an annual meeting. And with the virus and everything, what we're trying to do is go around individually, get with our county commissions, sort of give them an update on what's been done, maybe answer any questions that you may have if we know at the time, and give you an idea of what's coming up again in the future. So we just want to take this opportunity. We appreciate your time and we'll try not to keep, keep you on here very long. I also have Ken Klowen, he's on the screen there as well. Ken is our traffic engineer. He lives in Martinsburg, so he addresses a lot of the traffic concerns down there. I also have Jet Sales, who's our Assistant Maintenance Engineer. He lives in the Martinsburg area as well. And then Nathan Ware should be on the phone on audio. He's our Jefferson County Supervisor. And here next to me is Travis Ray. Travis is our maintenance engineer. Barry Knotts, our former maintenance engineer, retired, and Travis has taken over that position. So he comes to us with a lot of maintenance experience, a lot of equipment knowledge, so we're very fortunate to have him on board.
Thanks for taking your time today, all of you.
You're quite welcome. So what I did, I did send down a contact list, just so you know. The staff, in particular the main staff that deals with our maintenance bridge and construction, the main topic or main issues probably are going to be related to maintenance, traffic problems and things like that. So what I did want to do is just give you a brief summary of projects that we completed in approximately the last 12 months, and that's the list I've given you there. Most of them are paving projects. Overall, we've done approximately 40 miles of paving in Jefferson County, which is pretty good. And you'll see off to the left side that those are paving, a lot of them are paving by purchase order. That's what the PO stands for. What that is, is basically the various contractors bid out unit costs for, for material, lay down, milling, and then depending on, on the particular job that comes up, we have a spreadsheet that we plug in those numbers and determines what contractor is awarded that project. So it allows us to do things very quickly versus the one at the bottom you see there. West Virginia 230 was a paving by contract. In that case, we actually survey, develop plans. And it just, it's a longer, more involved project in order to do that. And those are usually projects that were, takes, there's more than just, just paving. It might include drainage, some structure work, things like that. So it's more involved and therefore plans have to be developed. We were fortunate, let's see, the third project down there, Carneyville to Coast Guard Drive, that was a go bond or general obligation bond project. It was done by purchase order, but Central Office advised us that there are some available funds. And usually, the quickest way for us to do anything or spend those funds in, by purchase order paving. So we had two projects there that were go bonds. Then there, I failed to, I think, note the Hall Town to Harpers Ferry on 340. That was about a two mile, two mile paving project on the four lane. That also, that was a MARC project. That was some of the funds that came through from the federal government. Medical Access Roads Program is what the MARC stands for. So we, we had that. And then we also had Shannondale. Started out as a drainage project, originally authorized for about $100,000 to address some of the drainage problems in Shannondale. The fortunate thing was that some of the other districts, because of the selection of the projects and what their contractors in their area were able to do, they weren't able to spend their money. So District 5 was originally allocated $5.73 million out of these MARC funds. Because the other districts weren't able to spend their money. We've gradually been submitting and requesting for funds from other districts. So we're up to, right now, about 7.57 million, just over 7.57 million dollars that we've spent here in the district out of the MARC funds. Jefferson County probably has benefited more than any other county because we were able to expand on existing projects. We couldn't, couldn't go out and do a new project, but if it was. We couldn't, couldn't go out and do a new project, but if it was directly associated with an existing project, we could, we could lengthen the limits and, and expand those. Shannondale was, was one area where we were able to do that in. So rather than just do the drainage, we've also done paving, we're able to pave Mission Road. Mission Road paved, my number's here. 4.38 miles, of course, that was under purchase order of Mission Road. But in seven, well, just over 800 feet of pipe in, in Shannondale, that was part of our original drainage project. And then our State Forces paved about 5.17 miles in Shannondale with the funds available. So that was all additional bonuses that we got. So ultimately, right now, Jefferson County received about three, or I'm sorry, 1.84 million dollars instead of the original 1,030,000. So Jefferson County has received right now in our district about 24.3% of the total MARC funds that we've expended in District 5.
Sir, questions for you. Are these projects mainly being funded by the road bond that was passed?
The go bond, those, that I identified, those two go bond projects, those were, yes.
Okay, and just for the other commissioners here, this attachment was sent outside the agenda packet. There's a huge chart listed of what it was going through, I just want to make sure everybody has that. A few other things, quick thing, so 340 South into Virginia, I know that thing has been talked about for quite some time. Do we have any idea when that's going to be put forth or?
Well, the contract itself has been let. That is a design build project. So it's a consultant and contractor team that bid on those. They're currently right now working on plans and getting the environmental permits. They are contacting property owners, preliminary right of way work. So there's, I just checked this morning, matter of fact, to try to find out. We don't know for sure, we have a, I'm sorry, pre-construction meeting next week. It'll probably be next summer or spring before construction takes place, but I don't know yet. I mean, I hate, I can't give you a definite date on that, because it is basically left up to the consultant contractor team.
That's good, thanks for that update. And I have one last thing before I open to other commissioners. The rock face on 340 into Maryland, they did the rock study a while ago. Do you anticipate any further issues or destruction on that part of 340?
Yeah, actually, I talked to the project manager on that this morning as well. Probably this spring there'll be a public meeting. The design is pretty well finished, but we have to, we want to present that to the public. The National Park seems to be on board right now with everything. So the, the plan to finish the, well, the environmental assessment document is finished. So that's dealing with the national parks and all the environmental concerns. Right now, it's slated for construction next summer. Not this current summer, but next summer.
So just, I know that's a little far off. Are we anticipating some serious like closures? I just want residents to be well aware of the potential. I know Hillsborough, Virginia has caused quite a mess for West Virginia. Granted COVID, people aren't traveling as much. Hopefully, when this happens, we'll be back in work scale. Do you think it's going to be like large scale closures for long periods of time?
Yeah, it probably will be. I mean, you've got people up on that rock face, you know, putting netting and drilling and things like that. It's just, it's too dangerous to have people driving below the rocks.
Yeah, so with that in mind, I hope if the county and West Virginia DOT, we can get that communication out to residents well, well advanced.
Right, that's going to be a big part of the public meeting this spring.
Okay.
Is to let the, the public know what's going on. Of course, we'll be working closely with Virginia on, you know, any detour routes and things like that.
I mean, any other commissioners have comments?
No, Commissioner Conklin kind of hit on the question I had about 340 South. That's District, and I just, I think you answered it very well. And I did see where, I guess the bid was awarded, so I know you guys are well on your way.
Right, yeah, and that is, that is a, one of the bond projects as well, so that's.
This is Jane Tab, and I just wanted to comment, I don't know if you were responsible for it or the city of Ranson or so forth, but the new paving on the road in front of our emergency services building that, you know, comes out of this subdivision out to Route 115. That is much appreciated, that has been pothole city for years. So I'm glad to see a new paving surface there.
All right, I think, I don't think commissioners have any other updates or questions. Do you have anything else, sir?
No, I don't, no. We just appreciate your time and we look forward to keeping you up to date on, on projects as they occur.
Perfect, thank you all for joining us today, stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Aye, Mr. Chris Livingston, Zedrock Contractor Services LLC, zoning map amendment rezoning request for Zedrock Contractor Services.
Yes, how are you today?
How are you doing, sir?
Good, thank you. I am requesting that Parcels 23, 27, and D Book 1029, page 643, asking it to be changed from its current residential growth status to general commercial. We want to put a contractor's office with storage there. You also, what's that?
Go ahead, sir, sorry.
I also would like to know if it's, I guess at this time, the setbacks on the north property line, if we could have them change to 25 opposed to what they currently are. And that's, that's the section that runs parallel with Old Rider Road there.
All right, all right, thanks for the update, sir. Yeah, I mean, this is just who you referred to playing. Now that'd be great, actually.
I mean, essentially, what she's going to tell you is that you have to set up a hearing before this body within 60 days. And you have to refer to the planning commission to determine whether or not that is consistent.
Alex, I've unmuted you, Alex, if you want to. Maybe you want to say about the rezoning?
Now, can you hear us, Alex? I'm going to make the motion.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
All right. Any update on this, Alex?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I was, Jenny's also on the line, she's typically handles the rezoning. So the purpose of this request would be to schedule a public hearing, which the county commission is required to do within 60 days of receiving their, the application. And obviously, the setback request would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that'll be a separate request. So I think he's just making you guys aware of that.
Okay, so 60 days from now, is everybody okay with setting a public hearing for the February 4th meeting? Maybe at 1:30 PM?
Yes.
Is there any objections to that?
I think also, as part of the motion, I apologize, it would be to refer the application to the planning commission. That's a formality, but it does have to go to the planning commission for their review for consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, that's, that's fine. This would probably be a virtual public hearing, we would take virtual comments and written comments. I'll make the motion, so I move to accept the request for zoning map amendment for Zedrock Contractor Services LLC. And refer the request to Jefferson County Planning Commission for review of the comprehensive plan consistency and to schedule a public hearing on the rezoning request on February 4th, 2021 at 1:30 PM to receive input from the public regarding the request.
Commissioner, just so you're aware, I think the next planning commission meeting is February the 9th.
Do you want to do the?
So it might be a good idea.
The 18th.
I think the night meeting, so.
We could, we could certainly, it's going to be virtual regardless for this, so it really. I think we can move it to the night meeting if that's okay with everybody, maybe do it at like 7:00 PM. They're going to be home from work.
That way, the public hearing, the public would know whether or not the planning commission uses this.
Okay, so I'm going to amend my motion to hold the public hearing on February 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM to receive input from the public regarding this request.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
You refer.
And refer, and refer to the planning commission as previously suggested motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good day.
All right, we'll move on. Douglas S. Rockwell, citizen reimbursement request for attorney fees and cost incurred in challenging the finding by the commission that zoning text amendment DTA 19-03 was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is Mr. Rockwell on the line?
I do not see him on the line.
We're a little early, so. Let's, let's wait until the actual agenda item, and I'm going to jump to. Can we do anything on county administrator reports? So that's on page number four, county administrator reports. Which one would you like to do first?
Let's do the continuation of the mid-18 part.
I mean, we can, we can take, let's just take a break until quarter open. Okay, so we'll, we'll recess for eight minutes and reconvene at 10:00 AM. We're back, it's about 10:44 AM. We're going to move to agenda number six again. Mr. Douglas S. Rockwell, reimbursement request for attorney fees and cost incurred in challenging the finding by county commission that that zoning text amendment 19-03 was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Mr. Rockwell, are you on the phone?
I think we have to be on the phone with our deputy.
She said this one, Jane.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Tab, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have Mr. Rockwell now.
Okay. Can you hear us, Mr. Rockwell? Mr. Rockwell?
Hi, I can barely hear you.
Let's get that.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can't, thank you. Good morning, happy new year.
How are you doing, sir? And so I hate to do this prematurely, but we have two new commissioners, and this is a legal matter, so they need to be put up to speed, our legal counsel regarding this matter. So I'm going to move, go into executive session to seek legal advice regarding agenda item number six and zoning text amendment ZTA 19-03.
Second.
Any discussion? So we'll vote on this, sir, and just hang on the phone, I don't think this is going to be a very long executive session, just we need to get these new commissioners up to speed on this matter. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to go to executive session for legal advice? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
Commissioner Tab, can you call the number that I provided you to call?
Yes, I will. Hello, this is Jane.
Commissioner Tab, you need to meet your computer.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Jane, I hung up on you, can you call back, I'm sorry.
Will do.
All right, we're back out of executive session, it's 11 o'clock, I move, we reconvene as regular county commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back with the county commission. Mr. Rockwell, are you still on the phone?
Hey, can you hear him?
I can.
You can hear us, sir?
I'm sorry?
Okay, is there any, I'm going to, I'm going to open up the floor to you to present your agenda item if you'd like to make any comments here.
I would, thank you, for the benefit of the new members. The solar amendment ZTA 1903 violated state law, the county zoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan. Citizens of this county living in the rural district, these citizens' rights are granted by the conditional use process, the right to notice of a commercial development wanting to locate their own district, and the right to appear before the BZA and present any grievances regarding the same and have a determination thereof. These rights cannot be waived by hearing at the concept stage of the sentence. Both West Virginia law and the zoning ordinance require that a zoning amendment must, must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Gold 8, paragraph 5, on page 77 of the plan, provides that zoning may permit non-agricultural related commercial uses by the CUP process in the rural zone if the use is agriculturally and rurally compatible in scale and intensity, and poses no threat to public health, safety, and welfare, and if the use helps to preserve farmland and open space and continued agricultural operations. Both the planning commission and the county commission knew of this requirement when the solar amendment was drafted and adopted. In a July 2019 memo regarding special events for the rural district, the zoning administrator explained why, under the comprehensive plan, a conditional use permit was required for weddings, receptions, and social events, five to 10 acres. Attached to the memo were copies of pages 77 through 80 of the plan. This memo was delivered to the planning and county commissions in July and September, respectively, in 2019. Less than twelve months later, the planning commission recommended ZTA 1903 putting solar facilities in the rural district as a conditional use. After ten workshops where solar developers stated they needed 800 to 1,000 acres for solar energy facilities, and the public demanded that the CU process be followed, this commission adopted ZTA 1903 by a three to two vote. So as to matter, so as a matter of right, solar facilities were allowed on tracks of 800 to 1,000 acres.
I'm in California, Rockwell.
Can't hear you. Hello? Hello?
You can hear us, we can hear you now, sir. I don't want to interrupt you, but can you submit this comment for the record after you make it, please?
I can't understand you, Josh.
After you're done making your comment, can you please email the commission office with that so we can put it in the record?
I, 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 you said something about an email or a letter, I don't know what you.
The comment you're making right now, can you email it to the commission office so we can put it in the minutes for the record?
Which, which, what are you talking about?
The one you're making currently, the comments.
You mean my comments?
Uh, yes, sir.
You mean the memo?
Email, you can email them after you've done, after you're done making them.
Yeah, but I'm not finished yet.
I, I know, I want to be.
I can't hear you, I, I only have five minutes, I got to give, five minutes, I'm, I'm gonna be given the five minutes.
We can hear you, sir, you can continue.
Mr. Rockwell, your cell phone reception's breaking up, so you're cutting in and out, so we're wanting clarification on your memo to be delivered later, so we can get the full remarks.
Well, all right, I'm, I'm going through Sandy's. Basically, what we're talking about is, as a matter of right, solar facilities were allowed on on a track of eight hundred to a thousand acres. For weddings, a conditional use process had to be followed.
Okay, is that your comment, sir, or do you have more?
I have more.
Okay, proceed.
It, it was clear from the beginning that solar energy facilities were being forced on county citizens. This was totally unacceptable. Certain elected officials and employees of the county government who we support with our tax dollars were not doing their job properly. Our rights were being trampled. We had to file the suit. The actions of the county were indefensible, so much so that your attorney never filed an answer denying the allegations in the complaint. Vacating the vote of October one approving the solar amendments, the rights of the citizens under the CUP process have been restored, but at a great cost in attorney fees and expenses. You have copies of the invoices showing the thousands of dollars incurred. The stakes were committed at all levels of county government. Why should we citizens bear the expense and the cost of forcing the county to correct them? The buck stops with the county commission. Take responsibility for the county's actions. Do the right thing, pay the amount requested, and restore trust in the county government. Thank you. Do you have questions?
Thank you, sir. So just before I open the floor for questions, what you're asking here is for the county commission to reimburse you legal fees in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, is that correct?
Uh, that's what the request was. As you can see, it's less than the amount of the invoice.
Okay, so I'm just looking at the agenda and it says fifteen thousand, is that, is that the correct amount, or are you requesting a different amount?
I'm requesting, I put in a written request of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, as you can see, it's a discount from the amount of the invoice that I personally am responsible for.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page with what the correct amount is. So the amount is fifteen thousand for the consideration of this commission?
That's correct. And, and it, this is not about winning or losing, it's a request that I'm making to be reimbursed to try to correct wrongs.
Okay, so I'll save my comments for the, the end. I'm gonna open up the floor. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Taff since she's virtual. Commissioner Taff, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, no, I don't at this time.
Okay, uh, any commissioners here in person have any comments for Mr. Rockwell about the fifteen thousand dollar attorney fee reimbursements?
Uh, I do. Mr. Rockwell, this is Commissioner Solinger, can you hear me?
I can.
Um, I just had a few questions for you. I'm just curious, how long have you been a taxpaying citizen of Jefferson County?
Slow up, slow up, speak slower.
How long have you been a taxpaying citizen of Jefferson County?
Since nineteen seventy. Long time.
And are you aware that Stanley Dunn presented a text amendment for solar to the planning commission?
As a conditional use request.
And, um, what is your relationship with Mr. Dunn?
Uh, we, we enjoy properties.
Okay. Have, have you all ever been in litigation before?
I, this has nothing to do with this Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Rockwell, you can answer the question, sir.
You, you asked the question. This is not personal with Mr. Dunn. This has to do with the rights of all citizens, not only myself, but the other plaintiffs in the lawsuit. And people who wouldn't put their name up for the lawsuit, that, you know, Jefferson Vision Group is supportive of the lawsuit.
Mr. Rockwell, this is great, if these questions are pertinent to taxpayers reimbursing you fifteen thousand dollars, I, I'd be inclined to hope you would answer some of them. If not, can we just please pass on the question and move on?
Okay, I, I'm trying to address the question of Mr. Stolper, trying to show that there's some relationship, animosity between me and Mr. Dunn, okay? He's trying to stir up here. That is not the case. It's not just me. There are others involved in the lawsuit.
All right, I want to move on. I have another question for you, and this is a hypothetical question. You've been a taxpayer since nineteen seventy, and you've been paying taxes in this county for a long time. If, if someone filed a frivolous lawsuit against the county, do you feel as a taxpayer you should pay their, uh, this, their law fee, their attorney fees back to them if it was a frivolous lawsuit?
Well, sir, if this were a frivolous lawsuit, then it wouldn't have been, why would you have taken the action that the county took? I mean, it, it, this was a determination of whether or not the amendment was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. That was the sole purpose of this suit. Has nothing to do with solar energy. It has nothing to do with winning or losing, it was just a determination of whether or not the amendment was in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Sir, and to that point, I, I believe the county commission sent back the amendment to the planning commission, and we are currently waiting on the planning commission to bring us back to the amendment. But I don't think, I don't think this is at the end yet. I mean, we're still, we're still waiting here from the planning commission, there may be a subsequent decision of the county commission in the future.
Well, I understand it's going to the planning commission, and the planning commission is working on, uh, whatever changes they're gonna make. That's, that's gonna occur, I guess, on the twelfth. Uh, but in the meantime, you know, we had to spend money to get this thing corrected.
Could I, could I?
Go ahead. Nathan?
I take some exception to, um.
Mr. Rockwell, can you please give us a moment?
Yeah, I was trying to get to the closest place. Um, yeah, I take some exception, Mr. Rockwell, this is Nathan Cogburn, to your characterization of what occurred. Uh, the order specifically, uh, is just an agreement to dismiss the case and return it to the planning commission for further review and consideration of public hearing if required by law. There is no admission of wrongdoing, uh, and I would respectfully suggest that's because there was no wrongdoing. I, um, there is no winner or loser in this ordinance. You did not substant, or in this order, you did not substantially prevail in this lawsuit, and therefore, it would be my opinion that you are not entitled to legal fees uh, for this, uh, this particular case. Um, the, uh, the, the issue was not won by your, uh, your lawsuit.
May, may I answer?
Uh, I can answer, but yes.
This is not a win or lose proposition, okay? I'm not arguing winning and losing. The, the lawsuit was simply to address whether or not there was wrongdoing in adopting the amendment, the amendment being in violation of the comprehensive plan, and to restore the rights to the citizens to appear at a conditional use process on, on solar facilities, should one be applied for in the rural district. That was the sole purpose of it, okay? Win or lose.
Does the, can the other commissioners the chance to make a comment as well?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Solinger, do you have any remaining remarks? Anybody, Miss Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Hudson?
I just, uh, I think it's important that any time someone decides that they want to challenge or sue the county, we're gonna cover their legal fees for them to, to sue county.
I agree, I agree too.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, Commissioner, I got one thing. Give me one second. Uh, Mr. Rockwell, I, I'm looking at your invoice. You're requesting basically the full amount of your legal fees. When I go through the line items, it looks like some of these services were provided for other individuals, not yourself. Are, are you covering the legal fees of other individuals outside of yourself?
I, I, back up, please. You're asking, you're asking if I'm requesting fees on behalf of other people?
No, I, I'm looking at the invoice, and it's mentioning names of other individuals for services provided to those individuals. Yet you're asking for basically the full amount of the invoice. Are you paying legal fees of other individuals?
Uh, the, it, the invoice is to me because I'm the one that contacted the attorney, I retained the attorney, and I promised the attorney that I would be responsible for the attorney fees regarding this litigation.
So you, you are paying fees of other individuals listed on the invoice?
That's correct. The, the other individuals listed on that will not, are not, and have not any expenses.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chairman, I move the motion to deny the reimbursement request for attorney fees by Douglas S. Rockwell.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Taff, that was a aye, right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, we'll move on. We're a little fast scheduled. We're not taking a break until eleven fifteen. Uh, next agenda item is number seven, interviews and appointments to Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals, two three-year terms ending January first, twenty twenty-four, and two alternate terms ending January first, twenty twenty-two, and January first, twenty twenty-four. I think the first, of the individuals on the phone.
It looks like we have Ms. Chikiriki, Ms. Patterson. I do not see Mr. McKinney. Oh, Mr. McKinney. They, they are all.
Okay, so I, I hope everybody can hear me. A quick yes would be helpful.
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. McKinney?
Hi, this is your.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just going to be part of the, how they are in the agenda packet. So Mr. McKinney is first in line. Uh, Mr. McKinney, I know you serve on that board. Can you please tell me why you would like to continue serving on that board?
Uh, yes, sir, I'll, I'll keep it brief for you. I've been on the board for nearly two years. Um, you know, it's, it's really, it's really been a pleasure for me to be able to advocate for, um, you know, for residents' property rights while being mindful of the resources and the, you know, the welfare of the county. Um, yeah, all in all, you know, it's a, it's a small board, but it's an important board, and I'm happy to have a voice there.
Any other commissioners have questions for Mr. McKinney? Commissioner Taff?
Yes, I do. Um, Mr. McKinney, why, um, I'm a little perplexed. I feel like the Board of Zoning Appeals is more a judicial role, yet you say you're advocating for property rights. Can you expound on that further?
Uh, may I, perhaps advocating wasn't the correct usage, as it's not like a, you know, it's, it's, it's not kind of like a, you know, I, I offer an unbiased opinion. Um, but, you know, I, I am mindful of the zoning ordinance, and, you know, I'm also mindful that people paid for their properties.
Okay, so what, what do, can you explain to me your understanding of the function of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Obviously, not everything can necessarily fit tight-knit into the comprehensive plan. Uh, there are extenuating circumstances, you know, different lot sizes, um, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, sometimes there are setbacks with different circumstances, and we, you know, it's just to, uh, you know, weigh out how it fits with the comprehensive plan and how it weighs out with the, uh, you know, health, safety, and welfare of the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For Mr. McKinney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on. Patterson, how are you doing today?
Yeah, I'm fine. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, can you hear us?
Super, super, thank you. I've had a little bit of computer problems, so I'm dialed in, thank you.
But you're currently still, you're currently on the board and don't want to be reappointed, correct?
Absolutely, yes, I was on the board, and I am on the board, excuse me, and then prior to being a board member, I was an alternate.
Yeah, same question to you, why would you like to remain a board member?
Well, I've appreciated the opportunity to give back to the community, and I feel it's an important position. I've lived here since two thousand and two. Um, I'm a very, I'm an attorney, real estate attorney for thirty years now. I don't want to date myself, but I am. And I just feel that I have a lot to offer, and, um, I have the time and energy to do so.
Hey, hey, Commissioner Taff, any questions?
I'll, I'll just ask the same question that I asked Mr. McKinney. Um, Ms. Caterden, can you tell me, um, your viewpoint of the function of how the Board of Zoning Appeal, what its role is and function?
Oh, absolutely. We're here for appeals on people's variances and on their, um, oh, on their, sorry, conditional use permits. We're here to effectuate, as you say, in a judicial capacity and in appellate capacity, whether or not they meet the conditions of our board and of the West Virginia Code, um, eight A, where we are supposed to facilitate and be, oh, how do I say it, um, just a nonpartisan type of, uh, looking to make sure that everything is for the public health and safety, that there's nothing that's going to cause unnecessary hardship on people, and make sure that our community just continues to be developing in the, in the manner that we need it to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Next, uh, Ms., it's Chicharichi.
Chicharichi.
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
Yes, Chichariki. Good morning, how are you?
Good day. Would you like to consider for the alternate position?
Yes, sir, I would, yes.
And I'll, I'll just pose the same question in a different fashion. Why would you like to be the alternate?
Um, I would like to be the alternate because I believe it's an important, it's important to me to be active in the community. Um, as I said, it's, I've, I'm drawn to anything for civic duty, and I think it's important to be involved in any aspect to, to better my community.
And just to note, there are two open alternate positions. Would, are you, would you prefer the one ending January first, twenty twenty-two, or one ending January first, twenty twenty-four?
I, I'm open for either, either one.
Okay, that's all I have. Commissioner Taff?
Uh, yes, Denicia, um, you, you said you're drawn to the position for public service. Um, can you tell me why you were drawn to Board of Zoning Appeals specifically?
Um, actually, I, yes, ma'am, I can. I think that it would, it's important to be able to follow, to be part of something where you help follow the guidelines and, and codes that are set forth to.
where you help follow the guidelines and and codes that are set forth to better our our community and and have constructive growth.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Those are all the candidates for two positions and two alternate positions. So I'm going to open up for nominations the two three-year terms ending January 1st, 2024 on the VZA.
Two, three year.
There's two three-year terms ending January 1st, 2024. We have two candidates for two open positions. So I'm going to open up candidates.
I nominate Deidre Catterton.
Are there any nominations?
I nominate Nancy McKenney.
Okay, the nominations are closed. We're going to vote on these separately. First, we'll vote on Ms. Catterton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous vote. Ms. Catterton, you will be on VZA for a three-year term ending January 1st, 2024.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all of you.
You too. Next, we're going to vote on Mr. McKenney. Uh, all those in favor of Mr. McKenney on the VZA, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. McKenney will be on the VZA. Forty-one was the vote.
I nominate, nominate Deidre Chikiriki for the alternate position ending 2024. January 1st, 2024.
Okay, I believe she's the only nominee. We'll vote on it. This is for the January 1st, 2024 position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am. You're appointed to the January 1st, 2024 VZA alternate position, and just so the public's aware, we still have another alternate position ending January 1st, 2022.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. All right, I know that the break on here, does anybody need a break? All right, we're going to move on. Uh, we're going to be on agenda item number nine. Mr. Paulzinski, Director, Jefferson County Emergency Communications, Appointment Request for Full-Time Public Safety Dispatcher.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. I come before you eve of my 20th anniversary of employment with Jefferson County. Uh, welcome to the new commissioners to the county, uh, and, uh, Mr. Compton for, uh, the E-91 Advisory Board, and I also want to thank Commissioner Tab for your years of service and dedication, uh, to the E-91 Advisory Board, the Advisory Board, uh, myself. We truly appreciate, uh, the input that you've provided to us. Um, my agenda item, uh, is, uh, to request appointment, uh, for individuals to, uh, the Emergency Communications Center. Um, I currently have, um, 12 openings. Um, I know it sounds like a lot. Um, to us, uh, it is, uh, um, a significant issue with, uh, staff and during these trying times, uh, with, uh, um, you know, working around COVID-related issues, uh, that, uh, bringing staff on and, um, uh, getting through them, training is a critical task that the communications and staff, uh, um, need to work through.
Do you have to overfill the 12?
We allow.
The 12 includes overfill. So there's currently, um, 17 filled dispatcher positions, four supervisors and 13 dispatchers. Um, I currently have of those 17, three of them are in training, uh, and then, uh, the openings are, um, um, seven, uh, positions with five overfill. That we're try, what we're trying to fill.
Quick thing, just for the two new commissioners, why did we allow you to over, overfill these positions? Just so they're on the same page.
Certainly. So, um, our training is approximately, um, uh, nine to, or 10 to 14 months long, depends on the actual trainee itself. And, uh, we find that, uh, when we get to, uh, uh, full staffing, uh, and, uh, we lose a dispatcher or two dispatchers, that, uh, we then have vacancies and overtime, uh, that, uh, is difficult to fill, where the full-time staff are filling the overtime, and it takes another, you know, year to get back up to full staffing. So the commission, uh, uh, over the last two years has authorized, uh, an overfill, um, um, hiring in order to, uh, keep us at full staffing. Well, unfortunately, uh, we have lost a number of individuals, uh, full-time, uh, to, for various reasons, and, uh, so we're currently sitting at seven, uh, vacant positions. This is, uh, um, we've been in in this position in the past, uh, and it is just one of those, uh, issues in staffing that, uh, you know, we have people leave, uh, they're interested in doing other, uh, things, so, uh, that's one of our, uh, our difficulties.
It's not just Jefferson County that faces those difficulties, it's all areas facing these difficulties.
Certainly. The, the entire 911, uh, profession faces this difficulty. So, um, we, um, and the other issue is that the, you know, the job of a dispatcher is not, um, you know, simply administrative or secretarial like it used to be 30 years ago, 25 years ago. It is truly a professional, uh, public safety, first-first responder position, uh, that's critical, and each dispatcher, uh, is a highly trained individual, uh, that goes through comprehensive training, uh, in order to be able to handle emergency calls for service, uh, on a daily basis. So with that being said, uh, I am requesting, uh, for individuals at this time, uh, and the reason I'm, uh, requesting for is, um, the issues we have in training, uh, and the amount of, um, uh, pressure and the amount of, uh, taxing of the trainers of our full-time staff in order to bring, uh, uh, more than four individuals at any one time. We operate in a four-team environment, so obviously, you know, we're 24/7/365. There is, uh, a team of dispatchers here at all times, and, um, w- when a dispatcher, uh, is in training, that trainee works and operates alongside one of the certified communications training officers on their team. We try to keep one trainee on each one of the teams and, um, and only, uh, one trainee so that, uh, their actual, uh, that training is actually being provided, uh, to them, and, uh, they're given the opportunity. Uh, so with this being said, I currently have four viable candidates. Uh, uh, they have completed all the, uh, processes, including, uh, psychological background investigations, uh, and I'm recommending, uh, four individuals for hire. So we have other individuals in the, uh, processing right now, and will continue in the future, uh, in order to be able to fill, uh, further vacancies, uh, that we have. So, um, all candidates were offered, uh, grade four, uh, step one, which is, uh, the grade of the public safety dispatcher. The, uh, candidates are Mallory Spinks, Megan Farias. Uh, Megan is currently a Jefferson County Commission employee, uh, working in the Maintenance Department, um, Carrie Orr, and Amanda Duval. And upon approval, uh, these, uh, individuals will be placed into the next Dispatch Academy. Uh, we are organizing this Dispatch Academy, uh, to start on February 1, I believe that's the Monday, uh, yes. So, um, and they will start, uh, the first two of three phases, uh, in the Dispatch Academy, which is an eight-week, uh, classroom, uh, that involves, uh, uh, call-taking and law, uh, dispatching, uh, comprehensive hands-on instruction. Um, it's a controlled environment, the policy procedures, protocols, and all their certification classes before they're put under the headset with, uh, certified training officers. Once they're under the headset, it takes about four months of, uh, of actual OJT with the CTO and handling, uh, uh, live calls and live PD traffic in order for them to be certified in the first two phases of training. The third phase is fire dispatching, which is a very complicated, uh, uh, dispatching process.
All right. Uh, did I hear you say they're starting February 1st, 2021?
February 1st, 2021.
Okay, and just, this is in your current budget, correct?
Correct.
And just, I know that this commission and the previous commission has looked at hiring decisions during COVID differently. That has not applied to public safety. So I just want to make sure the new commissioners know that, that we've not stopped hiring for public safety. Go ahead.
We've had some COVID cases in the dispatch center too, which has also impacted, we do have a part-time cadre of people that we can call in, but, you know, COVID has also impacted, you know, we don't have many agents at home.
Yeah.
We can't.
These are very important, these are very important positions for Jefferson County taxpayers. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, um, particularly around Megan. So I see that she's training as an EMT. I just wonder in the interview process, if you asked her aspirations, is there potential of losing her to ESA?
I did ask that, uh, question of her. Um, this is a volunteer, uh, position for her. She runs with one of the volunteer fire departments, and I have a number of, uh, employees that are full-time here that, uh, are also attached to, uh, any one of the, uh, seven volunteer fire departments. Um, so it's not out of the question for one of the individuals, uh, to be, uh, associated to the volunteer fire department. I did ask about her aspirations, and she indicated that, uh, uh, she wants to make this her career.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wondered with the time invested in the financial aspects, uh, get her trained on those she does for herself, so, thank you.
And Commissioner Jackson, we, we haven't lost them to the ESA, but we have lost them to other medical, so we've had people who are in school.
Right.
And we, you know, if they decide they want to be, we have a, one physician's assistant as you know, um, or a practitioner. So we, when we lose them typically, it's because they've gone to school and they're going on to something else.
All right.
But I also spoke with Megan about this.
Wow.
She's, she's our cleaning person, so I see her every so often.
Okay.
And she did say that she wanted me to career.
All right. Just double checking.
It's nice to see transitioning from the department within the county, so we just want to see that. Um, any further questions for Mr. Paulzinski? All right, so all, Jane, do you have any questions?
No, I was going to make a motion, but if you're going to make a motion, that's fine.
Yeah, you go, you have at it.
Okay. I move that we approve the hiring of the four candidates for, uh, employment as public safety dispatchers. Salary, uh, $37,750, which is grade four, step one, effective February 1, and those employees, uh, would be Mallory Spinks, Megan Farias, Carrie Orr, and Amanda Duval.
I'll second that motion. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Paulzinski.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, and, uh, this is an invitation to, uh, all the commissioners that have not been to the Emergency Communications Center. I invite you to come out and, uh, see the operation live. Just letting you know.
And, uh, Jeff, I hope this will, uh, help, I'm sure it will, with your, uh, shortage, staffing shortages at time and cut down on overtime, and I do see you are wearing a sweatshirt or fleece with West Point, uh, prominently on the front of it, so congratulations on that, too.
You think so, Army.
Yeah, right, okay, have a good day.
You too.
Thanks. All right, we're, uh, ironically, right on schedule. All right, we're going to move to agenda item number 10. Robert Goodwin, Chief County Engineer, bond release request for Seneca Crossing LLC, Seneca Crossing Subdivision Lots 1 to 3, file 1824-dash-SD, and bond release request for Berkeley Medical Center, Lot 1, Seneca Crossing Subdivision, file number 19-dash-3-dash dash S. Mr. Goodwin, how are you?
Great. Okay, the, uh, first, first item I have is a complete release of the remaining $480,985 from the construction bond amount for Seneca Crossing LLC, Seneca Crossing Subdivision, lots 1 through 3, Planning Commission File Number 18-dash-25-dash-SD. This project's located on the south side of Route 45, Martinsburg Pike and McLean Way. Uh, work appears to be 100% complete.
All right, uh, Mr. Goodwin, just for the benefit of the two new commissioners, what exactly is this bond release? Basically, they post a bond and so forth. Could you explain that briefly?
Sure. Um, when a developer comes before the planning commission for either a residential subdivision, commercial subdivision, uh, which, that's this one, or a site plan, and a site plan is the development plan for, like, individual lots. It could be a restaurant, a church, um, anything like that, a hotel. They go before the planning commission with their plans, essentially demonstrate that their plan meets all the regulations, planning commission approves it, and then they have to post a construction bond, and the bond is a financial guarantee, uh, that they will build the project in accordance with the approved plan, thereby meeting all the regulations. And if they fail to do that, we will not release the bond, and in some cases where developers have walked away from subdivisions, not finishing the work, we've called in the bond amount, and the engineering office has bid the work and finished that work as best as we could. Um, so it's a financial guarantee that they'll meet the requirements of the planning commission. Um, so, so this project appears to have been constructed in accordance with those plans, and we're asking that, uh, the remaining amount of their bond be released.
All right, thank you for that, and I'll make the first motion. I authorize a complete release of the irrevocable letter of credit number 300025580-44 with United Bank in the amount of $480,985, construction bond amount for Seneca Crossing LLC, Seneca Crossing Subdivision Lots 1 to 3, file number 18-dash-25-dash-SD.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the second one I have, uh, is another bond release. This is for one of the lots in that subdivision, uh, for a site plan. It's a complete release of the remaining $258,642 from the construction bond amount for Berkeley Medical Center, Lot 1, Seneca Crossing Subdivision, Planning Commission File Number 19-dash-3-dash-S. This project is located on the south side of Route 45, Martinsburg Pike at 60 McLean Way. Work appears to be 100% complete.
All right, uh, I guess I'll make the, uh, motion on this one as well. I authorize a complete release of the irrevocable letter of credit number 4832790-44 with United Bank in the amount of $258,642, construction bond amount for Berkeley Medical Center, Lot 1, Seneca Crossing Subdivision, file number 19-dash-3-dash-dash-S.
Second.
Is there any discussion? You guys threw me off there with that, took two seconds. Any discussion, Commissioner Tab?
No.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, anything further, Mr. Goodwin?
No, I just mentioned, uh, so you have a heads-up. Uh, we're going to come in, I think, at the next meeting and ask you to approve the hiring of a, the clerk for the planning office. Uh, we completed the interviews and and found a good candidate. We also, I think, at that meeting are going to come in and present the solar facilities decommissioning bond policy, so we can go over that and, um, get to the point of where you can adopt that, so that everything would be in place possibly, uh, once things are worked out with the ordinance. Um, the other thing is that the impact fees, calendar year 2020, annual report and the impact fees, um, fiscal year 2022 capital improvement plan, uh, we plan to finish those and present those sometime in February to you. And that's all I have.
How would you think that a solar bond... How long do you think a solar bond discussion will take?
Nathan and Alex and I just need to meet, we're gonna meet and walk through it in a couple hours and make sure it's finalized. Then present the document to you and probably I could walk you through, it's, a lot of it has forms in the document that, that are standard that they need to fill out in agreement. But probably walk through, through the requirements in like 15 minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks a lot.
Discussion and questions, maybe the whole thing will take 30 minutes.
Okay, perfect. Appreciate it.
I have a question for Mr. Goodman, please.
Yes.
Roger, somebody asked me a question about impact fees and with the new ones that are, the titular bias has presented to us and it was more sort of like a procedural thing. So I found my old notebook that were, that you prepared on, in March of 2015 that has a lot of good information on impact fees. Number of building permits, impact fee facts, and state code and so forth.
I don't want to get off track of the agenda because it's not outlined in discussing that fees. Is this something you and Roger can talk about at another meeting or off-site?
Okay, I was just hoping he was planning to prepare another such document.
Yeah, I'll find that one and see if we can put something together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Sure.
Next agenda item, we're a little early. Russell, is Russell on? Fergus?
Yes, Peter.
I don't know. This is approval to advertise for Department of Information Technology Support Help Desk Technician and approval of some air security and emergency management grant for solar security. Go yours, Russ.
You're muted, Russ.
No, it says you're unmuted, but I can't hear, can't hear you.
I see guys.
Are you able to hear me now? Okay, here we go. So what we're here for, the first item is the Department of Information Technology would like to fill the above position that Josh just mentioned. It's a full-time position that was opened up in June of 2020 due to an employee resignation here in the information technology department. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the position was not filled at the time of resignation or any time thereafter. And from what I was going to discuss with you, the position's really necessary for the information technology department to successfully support all county employees and operations. The salary would be listed as $35,000 per year as a full-time employee, which is what the salary was for the resigning employee. This is a level one, help desk support. Some of the responsibilities that they have are supporting our end users in the county, hardware maintenance, including computers, printers, scanners, et cetera. We also expect them to help with patch management, including Windows updates, software updates, third-party updates, things like Adobe, other, other things like that. We also do firmware upgrades on our computers, laptops. We would use them for assistance with cybersecurity monitoring and also assistance with threat monitoring. And one of the other things that I have always found important is documentation preparation for diagnostics, end user training, and network information. I did not get a chance to say hello again. I met Commissioner Stolliver and Commissioner Jackson this morning and good to see Commissioner Compton and Commissioner Tab and Commissioner Hudson. I'm not sure what I can tell you about this. Anything that I can fill you in, please feel free to ask me any questions you would like.
That, that, Ross, you got it. All right, great job. I think great job today. But Ross did a great job with this. Ross did a great job with this. What's going on, what's going on? Continue for quite some time. This is absolutely needed, especially not with just remote work, but cybersecurity issues and stuff like that. It must account for some significant dollars if something goes wrong. So I mean, I'll absolutely support this. I don't have any questions. I'll open it to the floor. Commissioner Tapp, since you're remote, if you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do think the position needs to be filled, especially during these times of remote meetings and so forth and. Yeah.
Any other commissioners, questions on this? Is there a motion? All right, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the information technology department to advertise for Department of Information Technology Support Help Desk Technician Level One and salary $35,000 per year, full-time employee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that's, that's the first one. Ross, can you fill us on the next one, please?
Yes, of course. The next one is, this was the second year we have participated in the Homeland Security Emergency Management Grant Process. The first year we were unsuccessful in our grant writing. We worked on it quite a bit this year. I need to take just a moment and thank the Director of the Homeland Security Emergency Management, Steve Allen, and also the Deputy Director, James Sager. They were instrumental in helping me write the grant request and get it approved. The grant is for the purchase installation training of a software for network analysis configuration to baseline monitor, detect, and address cybersecurity issues and anomalies that may be detected or may not be detected through unauthorized and erroneous configuration changes. This is something that we definitely would like to do. We have had issues, as one of the things that I just said is with staffing. So this will definitely help us. We can spend more time on some of these. But we haven't had the capability in the past to monitor some of these changings, changes. And we were very, very fortunate to get the grant. One thing that I did find interesting, and you might too, is the grant was for SolarWinds Network Configuration Manager. And if you follow hacks and things happening out in the world, SolarWinds is a huge, huge company that is in pretty much all levels of federal and state government with their products. And we currently use two of their products that were not part of what just happened with them. The hack that happened was with the Orion platform. And unfortunately, that is what this grant was for. They have now found that they have solved this issue and taken that out. But if you follow any of that, there was an emergency directive 21-01 in reference to this over the last month or so, but we seem to have that rectified. We have not implemented this and will not implement it until we have been given the go-ahead. But there was apparently yesterday a supplemental emergency directive that approved it as long as you're using the most current version. We will be taking a little bit of time if the commission approves this and signs off on it to implement this, as we want to do a little bit more homework on exactly the issues that were detected.
It looks like this grant is for almost $9,500 in no matching funds?
There are not matching funds in this particular grant. I believe that we have the $9,500. What would come of this is that this would be for one year. And at the end of that one year, then if we wanted to continue support and maintenance, then we would have an approximate fee of $1,500 to $1,800 per year for support and maintenance to keep it updated and current. And since this would be a cybersecurity threat analysis software that we would be using, we would want to keep that updated.
And that, that would not currently be in your budget, correct? We'd have to adjust your budget to reflect that increase $1,500 a year?
Yes. Now, one of the things with this, that the purchase that we are looking at, we would own the software and we would not have to purchase that to continue using it. But as you know, in, in most software cases, and especially with cybersecurity and threat management, we want to stay updated on these.
Yeah, this is not a subject that we can pinch pennies on. A lot of areas, counties, municipalities have had ransomware attacks that have cost us in far excess of $1,500 a year. So I just want, for the benefit of the new, the new commissioners, some of these grants are matching, they need matching funds. This is not one of them. You'll see some of those, but just know that there are some that need matches, some that don't. This is just one that doesn't. Commissioner Tapp, any questions?
No.
Any other commissioners have questions?
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank you for explaining the SolarWinds because I did take pause when I saw that in the proposals. So thank you for, for explaining that.
Of course.
There a motion or am I gonna do it? All right, I mean, guys, I, I can do these. Like, it's all right. I can't have a little bit fun here. All right, I move to approve the grant from the Homeland Security Grant Program for the Department of Information Tech Security Software Initiative and to have the commission president sign the attached documents to return the Homeland Security State Administration's agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Thanks for us.
Thank you.
It's nasty because I'm pushing my face into my speaking screen. All right, we'll move on. We're a little early. Can we jump to new business real quick? Number 14, review and approval of the 2021 notice of the board for viewing equalization.
I'm going to provide like a little review.
You know, a quick review of what this actually is. It doesn't have to be long.
So word of review and equalization is part of the tax assessment process. In February, pretty much any taxpayer who's upset about the value of their property for the upcoming tax year. And we do send out notices for anyone whose property value is increasing by 10%. Not their tax vote increases by 10%, but the, the property value. But anyone can do it whether they get a notice or not. And you hear those appeals and decide whether or not the assessor's value is correct. And we've had somewhere during the downturn in the economy, because our tax assessments are here at arrears, the economy had tanked. But the values hadn't yet because they were based on a year ago. So during that time, we were here until like midnight hearing appeals. It hasn't been that bad recently. I think the assessor, they changed the process a little bit to allow the assessor a little more latitude before it gets to you. So people can come in January, each to discuss with the assessor their value. And oftentimes she's able to resolve it before it even gets to you in February. But you are required to meet by statute whether or not you have any appeals. You're required to convene as a word of review and equalization. I think there cannot be more than two days between, or two business days between your convening as a word of review. So that's why we approve this schedule and you cannot, cannot adjourn word of review until February 15. And you cannot go, the word of review cannot extend beyond February 28th. And part of that is tied into the budget process. So that's why the schedule, schedule is here for you to approve. And that's why you're seeing these dates. The assessor tries to get people, you know, we may not know that we have hearings until that day, maybe the day before because of the way the statute is set up. We have tried as best we can to kind of funnel people into, you know, applying so we know exactly what you're getting. But sometimes people just say, they call and say, I want to hear. So we try to keep it as organized as we can, but sometimes you're gonna get people who just say, I'm hearing.
Yeah, and just to note, a majority of commissioners need to be in attendance to each one of these. I, I don't know about the virtual aspect here because it's the courthouse. If we're gonna have commissioners considering being virtual, we need to look at that. It, it must be held in the courthouse, right?
I, I didn't think that would be the best practice.
So we haven't had, we still got a few weeks before they start. If we can look at having.
There's a camera.
I just want to make sure people have one remote in, ten remote in. So let's get that settled before we have two days before one of these starts. Are there any questions from any commissioner on this? All the dates look okay to everybody?
Need a motion for that?
Just to approve, I guess.
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Tab? Nothing? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion accepted unanimously. But we're still a little, do they maybe need a five-minute break or anything? Yes?
Yes.
Five minutes. We'll, we'll reconvene at 12:05 for the next agenda item, which is number.
Yeah. All right. Keep the lunch coming. You come back, I'll give you money on that. I'll, I'll play that. Great. Hey.
Hi.
I sent a thing about meeting on like that Tuesday.
I got it.
Yeah. Did you watch Kenny Commission meeting?
I've been, I've been.
I told him that we're gonna be coming in with that. The last, like the last meeting in January.
Oh, okay.
Like Nathan wanted to, you know.
Jane?
Yes?
Okay, are you ready?
Uh huh. Okay.
All right, yeah, we're good. All right, we're back, 12:05, we're on Agenda Item Number 12. Michelle Gordon, Finance Director, Review of Four-Year 2022 Budget Charge for Departments. Michelle, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, the floor is yours, ma'am.
All right. Before we get started on the nuts and bolts of our budget charge information, I wanted to look at the budget process calendar first to kind of narrow down some dates. Some of the dates that we need to narrow down, typically we hold a Budget 101 meeting in February at 7:00 PM. I wanted to see how you felt about doing that or continuing that and when you wanted to do that.
I mean, I don't have a problem with holding on the second at 7:00 PM. Obviously, it's probably going to be virtual. Just make sure everything is in good shape so the public can see it and take part if they have questions. Any other commissioners have a problem with that? Okay, so that's fine. From past, go ahead, Michelle.
Then department meetings are usually the second, or the week after that, from February the 8th through the 12th. I want to make sure that that's okay. We typically need at least two to three full days of individual department budget presentations for the commissioners. In the past, we did some of those during the day and some of those during the evening. And I'll keep the same schedule as long as that week is okay and nobody's on vacation or anything.
Do any commissioners have a preference? Again, some of this may take place virtually. So let's make sure that's in sound working order. Do any commissioners have a problem with that week? Do any commissioners have a preference of what time? I, regardless of it, it's virtual or not, I'd like to split it up. I think we've done that portion, I think, one in the morning, one at night, and then either or. So do you want tentatively scheduled the 8th, 9th, and 10th? Or do you want to break, like, the 8th and 9th, and then the 10th? Or the 8th and 9th and the 11th? Or you want to hammer them all out in three days? Whatever is the preference of the commission. And again, you can do this virtually.
Just hammer them out in three days.
Okay, so do you want to do February 8th, 9:30 in the morning? The 9th at 6:00 PM and then the 10th, 9:30 in the morning?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Tab?
That's fine. And then, you know, we haven't had any snow, but that's always, but if we're doing it virtually, that won't be an issue hopefully in February. So, sounds good to me.
And just from my opinion as a single commissioner, I think more condensed, to the point, budget presentations are best. Why do you need it? What do you need? If it's a substantial change, why is it? And rather than an hour presentation, you're going to lose a lot of people in a long presentation. I don't know if any other commissioners want to chime in on that, but.
No, I think they need to keep it to the bullet ones, absolutely.
I agree. Okay.
And keep in, keep in mind, obviously, this was a COVID year too, so, you know, I'm sure we're going to be, you know, hearing a lot of requests, so.
Yeah. Anything?
Okay.
And then just for the two new commissioners that we have, keep in mind that after we have those department presentations, we typically schedule a few days for budget balancing to go over requests, to review revenues that are available and to make any cuts or additions as needed. So I don't have those on here, but we'll schedule those after we finish up our last department or agency presentation that week. Other important dates for you to remember would be that the assessor will certify the value of real and personal property per regulation. That must be done by March the 3rd. So I have it on the calendar for March the 2nd. March the 8th through the 12th, we should schedule a community forum or public hearing. March the 18th is currently an evening regular session and commissioners typically adopted the budget. And per regulation, it must be done before March 29th. So right now I have it tentatively scheduled for March the 18th. If that date doesn't work, we can schedule a special session on Tuesday, March the 23rd. And that doesn't need to be decided today. It's, I just wanted to point that out.
I mean, if it's already a scheduled evening meeting, I mean, this is not going to take that long ideally. I think the 18th is fine. Would be honest. Anybody else? Commissioner Tab, are you okay with that?
That's fine.
All right.
Okay, and then by March, usually by March the 28th of each year, I'm required to publish the budget in the local paper. From April through May, I typically receive the health insurance renewal rates and I'll present those options to the commissioners for us to make decisions on what option we know on. Those will come in later in the year. April the 20th, the commissioners must reconvene and reconsider, consider any objections. And then we will proceed to lay the levy rate for property taxes. And per regulation, this must be done before April, or actually on April the 20th, which is the third Tuesday of April. We normally do that at a 9:30 AM meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that that's on there. And then usually April the 23rd, I will forward the levy order to the state auditor's office. And by regulation, that must be done within three days after the third Tuesday of April. So that's April the 23rd. And I think we've hashed out all the dates that I was worried about. So we'll go back to the first page and I'll start going over the fiscal year 22 budget charge information.
Need a motion on this to accept this? Or, okay.
Is everybody ready?
Yep.
Just to give you some little, a little information about our tax levy rate. The county realized an increase in tax revenue approximately $540,000 in fiscal year 20. That was over fiscal year 19's revenue of $13.8 million. It is projected to increase by another $154,000 for fiscal year 21 to $14.5 million. The projected increase that I preliminarily budgeted for fiscal year 22 is about $618,000. Or from $14.5 million to $14.9 million. Fiscal year 21's budget, I'm sorry, that was from the budgeted number of $15.1 million to $14.9 million. I said that backwards. $14.9 million to $15. The final assessment values are not available from the assessor until late January or early February. So that number will be revised slightly once we get those final assessments. Preliminary numbers indicate that real property assessed values will increase by about 2.3%, which is about $89 million. Fiscal year 22, over the total assessed values of $3.88 billion in fiscal year 21. The increase is a result of construction totaling about $417 million. And that is actually offset by a decrease of about 8.5% in the market value of existing properties, which is about $328 million decrease. During fiscal years 2016 through 2021, the county realized an average annual growth in the total assessable base of about 3.7% with 1.9% of that being attributed to. For projection purposes, I usually use a very conservative estimate. And the percentage increase used for the assessable base growth for fiscal year 22 revenue estimate is 2.3%. The levy rate is driven by growth in the assessable base of existing properties. New construction does not impact the. Construction does impact the final calculation of total revenue created from taxes. The county reached the maximum levy rate in fiscal year 19. The Class II levy rate, which is where all of our owner occupied residential property is, remained at the max levy rate of $28.60 for $100 of assessed value for fiscal year 21. And based on preliminary estimates for fiscal year 22, I anticipate that it will remain at the max levy rate. Some of the projections that I use for fiscal year 22 and for future years.
Michelle, I mean, I may interrupt you just to the commissioners, the new commissioners benefit. So the max levy rate, the levy rate itself is set by the county commission. We are at the max allowed by state. If a county commission wants to lower the levy rate, they have that ability, but there will be a decrease in overall revenue. And another thing to note too about growth in new construction. Everybody and the residents need to be aware, new construction is not factored in immediately. It's a lag period before we recognize any revenue. But with that new construction comes new taxes, which can be used for services and mitigate tax increases on current residents. Do I have that about correct, Michelle?
Yes, that sounds about right.
Okay, so there is a positive thing of some growth. We don't want to become Montgomery County or any of these other counties, but some growth is good for everybody. All right.
Then new construction doesn't include just new properties. It could also include renovations to existing properties. It could include a burned building that is being rebuilt. So that new construction includes more than just brand new homes. Some of the projections I use for fiscal year 22 is.
Oh, I just wanted to let them know that we set the levy rate for the county commission's portion of the taxes. But the Board of Education is also a levy-ing body. And they set the levy rate for the bonds and for the, for the education.
Exactly.
I think some people don't know that the county commission.
Yeah.
And the majority of their tax bill is actually for the Board of Ed, it's not for the county. Some of the revenue projections I use for other revenue types, for video lottery revenue. The, to estimate fiscal year 22's revenue of $2.1 million, I included a decrease of 4.4% from fiscal year 21's projected revenue of $2.2 million. The five-year projection includes increases in revenue for fiscal years 23 and 24 as the county economy is expected slowly recover from the COVID-19 pandemic business closures, reductions in business hours and reductions in capacity. Future years after fiscal year 24 reflect that this revenue will return to a flat revenue stream based on COVID-19 pandemic destabilization of this revenue. Similarly, for table games revenue, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, fiscal year 20's actual table games revenue decreased by 20% or from $635,000 in fiscal year 19 to $508,000 in fiscal year 20. Fiscal year 19 was actually the first year since fiscal year 12 that this revenue did not decline. And because of the pandemic, fiscal year 21's revised budget is $479,000. Fiscal year 21 is projected to end the fiscal year at $392,000, which is a decrease of 22.9% over fiscal year 20. The revenue stream has been significantly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic business closure. Those reductions in those business hours and capacity as well as, so I've included additional decreases for fiscal year 22. For fiscal year 22, I included a 6.8% decrease from fiscal year 21's projected revenue of $392,000. So for fiscal year 22, I have a projected revenue of only $365,000. All-time low for this revenue. The five-year projection includes increases in revenue for fiscal year 23 and 24 as the county slowly recovers from the pandemic business closures. Future years after fiscal year 24, much like video lottery revenue, will reflect the revenue, return to a flat revenue stream. Medical expenses premiums for county employees. We've come to sessions with our insurance representative and the anticipated continuance of the Affordable Care Act. We should plan to continue this fiscal year 22 and future years. For projection purposes, I included an increase of 5% annually. For fiscal year 22, that 5% increase amounts to $115,000. In fiscal year 21, analysis was performed that looked at employer versus employee premiums for the county and it compared that to surrounding jurisdictions. It showed that the county was paying a much higher portion of insurance premiums than that of any counties around us. The commission adopted a plan during last year's budget presentation to close this gap. And that plan will slowly increase the employee portion of insurance premiums for, through fiscal years, fiscal year 21 and through fiscal year 29. Employee salaries, merit increases. Full-time employees have received regular increases since fiscal year 17. In fiscal year 19, the county did realign the grade scale and implement a performance or merit-based system for employee annual increases. And that would be, come, those merit increases would become effective on employee hire dates. For fiscal year 22 projections, the cost of the full year for merit increases was included at about $195,000. Future increases of 2% were included in fiscal years 23 through 26. Cost of living adjustments, to ensure that the county is maintaining competitive salaries with neighboring states and other West Virginia counties. I do recommend that we continue regular COLAs for employees through adjustments in the county's grade scale as well. The projection includes $75,000 in fiscal year 22 for a COLA. Future years also include about a 0.7% for COLAs. COLAs are generally determined based on the CPI index or the Consumer Price Index for a previous year. The CPI index for 2019 is 2.3%. And the average for fiscal year 20, I'm sorry, for calendar year 2020 throughout sober is only 1.23%. Some of the budget charge items, I'll go over those after we go over the financial information. So if we could go to the next page for our new commissioners, the, these are the. The five-year projection is included in your handout and I will email you our most recent financial statements that show the breakdown between statutorily required departments that were required to fund, departments that have their own funding sources, and then any departments that don't have any dedicated revenues for them. So I'll email out you that, that was presented, presented at the last meeting and you weren't here for that. The fiscal year, the five-year projection is a good management tool that we use to ensure that the county is able to maintain operating revenues and expenditures for those types of statutorily required departments as well as departments that's counting, feels are required to be funded. At the beginning of the report, we have our taxes. You can see that in fiscal year 19, we have $13.8 million in taxes. Fiscal year 20 was $14.4 million, that was a 3.9% increase. Our budget for fiscal year 21 is $14.9 million and I project that we will actually receive about $14.5 million. There's usually about a $500,000 difference in our budget versus what we actually receive and that's due to unpaid taxes. So although we're budgeting that $14.9 million, we only receive about $14.5 million in cash. So for fiscal year 22, it will budget $15.1 million because that is the accrual basis tax revenue. But we probably will only receive about $14.7 million in actual revenue or cash that year. Future years include a 2.9% increase for fiscal years 23 through 29. So that's kind of how this spreadsheet works. Some of the other important revenues that you need to be on the lookout for would be our wine liquor tax. In fiscal year 19, we had $43,000 in revenue. Due to legislation change, changes that were made, the county now receives wine and liquor tax for all establishments in the county instead of just the unincorporated areas. So that increased our revenue from $43,000 to $255,000. And I've continued that increase, went out for the future years trends. For fiscal year 22, I project we'll receive about $316,000 for that. Another revenue that we increased last, a couple of years ago would be our property transfer tax. Fiscal year 19, we were $878,000. Fiscal year 20's actual is $1.1 million. I project that for fiscal year 21, we will receive about $1.2 million. And then for fiscal year 22, we included a flat number of $1.2 or $1.3 million for property tax revenue. We have not increased that to the max rate. We still have another couple of hundred thousand. We could realize if we decided to increase that property transfer tax to the max amount. I believe the state is already at their max rate for that.
So just, Michelle, some clarification for the new commissioners. So the property transfer tax, there's three components to it. There's a county component, there's a state component, and there's a component, a third. There's a county component, there's a state component, and there's a component, a third, that funds farmland protection, correct?
Yes.
Like Berkeley County, they automatically went up to the highest county rate they could the next day, I think, after it was approved by legislature. Jefferson County is not at that highest rate. This is the tax that you pay when you sell your house or a business. So they're going to take a cut out when you sell your house, if you sell your house. If you never sell your house, you don't pay the tax. So that's where this is. It can be used anywhere in the general fund, correct, Michelle?
Correct.
So that, what that whole ordeal is with that. Could be raised, you may know off the top of your head, I don't know. But there's a certain component that can still be raised for the county's portion.
It can still be raised. I think it would realize about 175 to 225,000 if we did increase it. That's just based on the current housing trends and the transfer trends. As you can see, in prior years, it was lower, but based on the current trends we have now, we would probably realize 175 to 200,000. I did not include, include an increase in my projection. I've kept it at the same rate.
I'm not proposing we do an increase. I just want to make sure the new commissioners have the understanding of what's going on here and where that money is coming from, how it's broken apart.
Yes. Hotel occupancy tax. I believe we hit a high in fiscal year 19 of 768,000. This tax is 100% dedicated to other expenditures, to other departments. 50% of this funds our CBB. About 49% of it funds Parks and Rec or 48%. And then another 2% goes to arts and humanities, I'm sorry, I think it's 46%. 2% goes to arts and humanities and then another, almost 3% goes to our historical landmarks commission. By state code, that money must be distributed. By state code, the county during its budget process determines that allocation. We cannot change the allocation for CBB, they must get at least 50%. We could give them more, but they can't get, they have to get at least 50%. The distribution to those other three organizations are determined during the budget process. And in the time that I've been here, it hasn't changed.
And you can only, so you can't use it for county commission expenditures? It's statute, what it can go to and what it cannot go to?
No, we can't even recoup any administrative costs. I know in Maryland, you could use some of it to recoup administrative costs, you can't do that here. That revenue has been decreasing as a result of the COVID pandemic. Fiscal year 20, we saw a $170,000 decrease and that directly impacted those four outside organizations. For fiscal year 21, based on the current revenue projection trend, I anticipate it will decrease even further down to about 455,000. I included a slight increase in fiscal year 22 to 638,000 as the economy starts to recover, as tourism starts to come back. Because this is based primarily on tourism in the area. But those organizations are the ones who directly see the impact of that decrease.
And Michelle, one quick thing. So the Hilltop Hotel, the county would not recognize any of that because it's a municipality in Harper's Ferry, correct?
If it's in an incorporated area, we would not realize any revenue from that. I'm not sure if it's in an incorporated area or not, but I believe it's in Harper's Ferry Incorporated.
Yeah, so I know there's some stipulations with the casino and whatnot and we still receive some from the hotel to casino when normally we probably wouldn't, but just know if the hotel is in a municipality, the county gets knocked.
So the CBB will, well.
The CBB always.
CBB, so they will get, so it will go to the countywide CBB.
Which is everybody except Branson.
That's correct.
So everybody is the same CBB except the municipality of Branson, which has their own. So they get that cut from their own.
And then, building permits. Building permits hit a high back in, I think fiscal year 12 or fiscal year 10, somewhere around there of like 1.2 million. It's starting to trend back up and fiscal year 19, total building permits revenue was 328,000. Fiscal year 20, it increased by 25% to 412,000. We have a budget of 386,000 so far in fiscal year 21, but I do anticipate that I'll be able to present a budget revision later this year and increase that revenue to 430,000. I included additional increases for fiscal year 22 of 5% because it was trending back from the increase. And I included increases in years, fiscal years 23 through 26. The departments that support building permits, I just wanted to point out that those departments also collect our impact fee revenue. And although it wasn't clear to be self-supporting because we only see about 400,000 of that revenue on the general fund operating revenue report, they are self-supporting if you look at the fact that they're collecting about 1.5 million in impact fee revenue.
Those were increased, those were steady for quite a few years and I think they were increased last year, the prior year.
Yeah, they just started increasing a year or two ago. We're nowhere close to that high of 1.2 million from probably 10 years ago.
I guess what we charged them, didn't we adjust the building permit fee a few years ago? Not just the amount we're retrieving from the permits, the actual cost.
I think the fee was realigned a couple of years ago, but it wasn't a big increase.
All right, you don't have to get into it too much, but I think there was some change.
For grants revenue, that includes monies we receive from local grants, federal grants, state grants. We typically, a large portion of our grant revenue is typically dedicated to our sheriff's department. Our sheriff's department does a great job of finding revenues. It's typically federal grant revenue. So in fiscal year 19, we had total revenues of 506,000. Another department, two other departments that we typically see a good bit of grants from are our prosecuting attorney's office. They typically receive federal grants for their victim advocate. And then for homeland security, about 50% of the budget for homeland security is covered by federal grants. Fiscal year 20's revenue increased to 2.7 million and that is solely a result of the money that we received from the CARES Act for COVID-related expenditures from March 1st through June 30th. For fiscal year 21, those CARES Act revenues remain through December the 31st and I project that we will receive about 2.4 million in grant revenue for fiscal year 21. Now, if you look at fiscal year 22, I don't project that we will receive any additional grant money from the CARES Act. So I have that backed down to our normal $320,000 budget that we have for federal, state and local grants. Let's see. Ambulance fee billing is a new revenue that I started recording in fiscal year 20. That 916,183,000 dollars represents the county's portion of ambulance fee billings that we donate to the fire departments. I project that for fiscal year 20, we'll have an additional or similar amount of 920,000 and then increases for fiscal year 22 to 930,000 and on up to a million dollars in fiscal year 26.
So Michelle, to that point, to the other commissioners in the public, this is the estimated or absolute data to reflect the amount of money that fire departments are recognizing for ambulance billing?
They actually, that's correct. Now, they, they own the, so I only did 75% of the revenue and I retrieved that information from their 990s. So the total revenue was a little over, around 1.2 million. And then 75% of that would be the amount that's derived from county staffing that the fire departments keep.
Okay, I don't want to get hung up on this conversation because it's going to be a longer conversation. I just want everybody to realize what that number is.
The 911 fees, 911 fees that we receive are about 1.9 million. We are statutorily required to use that money to fund our 911 operations center. It is not fully self-supporting, but it's pretty close. We still have expenditures for 911 operating center that come out of our capital outlay fund. We have expenditures that are included in our IT department as well as our maintenance department. So we, the 911 center is almost fully self-supporting and I just wanted to point that out. So I've kept that revenue pretty flat. It has not historically changed much from the 1.9 to 2 million dollars. Franchise agreements, the funding that we receive, cable franchise agreements with any, with the Comcast cable operator here in Jefferson County. We can only receive franchise agreements for areas that are not in the incorporated boundaries of cities. So in fiscal year 19, we received 824,000. The reason that number is higher than our normal trend has to do with an audit that was performed. And we received some back franchise fee revenue for the last five to 10 years. We normally receive about 530 to 550,000. So I show that our fiscal year 22 revenue is back to our normal trend of 577,000. Video games revenue. And you can see we hit our high in fiscal year 19 of 635,000. And that's decreased down to 365,400 for fiscal year 22. And I went over that calculation earlier. Video lottery revenue is the next line that's highlighted. We hit a high of almost 3 million dollars in fiscal year 19, still not as high as it was back in fiscal year 12. But it was starting to recover or flatten out. You can see that for fiscal year 22, we're expecting to see an 800,000 dollar decrease, down to 2.1 million dollars. Offsetting that 800,000 dollar decrease would be our tax increase and that's helped to keep our budget at a manageable point. Transfers from the Assessor's Valuation Fund. Just wanted to point out that our assessor receives money from about, let's see, it was 1.85% for a while. I think she's down to 1.8% that she receives from property tax revenues. And she, that money is deposited into a separate fund for her to use to pay for things that she needs for assessing property values throughout the county. She typically uses that money to fund about six or seven positions. She reimburses the county on an annual basis about 530,000 dollars. And that's what that transfer from the Assessor Valuation Fund revenue is. That's her reimbursing the county through those seven.
She doesn't need to be doing that. She's graciously been doing that for quite a number of years and we thank her for that.
Yeah, she uses that fund to buy equipment, to buy vehicles, replacement vehicles and to fund software maintenance, software agreements, licensed users. She, she uses that fund very wisely. Any questions about any of these revenues? Is there something that you wanted me to go over that I didn't touch on? Okay, so for fiscal year 22, our projected revenues will be about 27.43, 473 million. Now, if we go to the next page, we're looking at our expenditures by department. The commission department is typically where I include employee increases for merit increases in COLA. I used to include health insurance there, but I've moved that into a separate department. I'll show you that in a minute. Home departments, I've used about a 2% increase to represent any type of loss that they may have in utilities, equipment, materials and supplies. And the majority of that increase is typically related to salaries for merit increases for employees. You can see that for fiscal year 22, I have 195,000 and 75,000 included for that merit increase in those COLA line items. The only other line items that are new would be our insurance program. You can see that it had no expenditures in fiscal year 19 or 20. For fiscal year 21, the commission decided to pull the health insurance expenditure out of departments. So you may see some departments decreasing drastically from fiscal year 20 to 21. And it's because we pulled health insurance out of the departments and put it into a separate department by itself. We found that some departments were having trouble managing health insurance when they had high turnover. Significant challenges during open enrollment. So to remove that burden from department heads, we placed it into a separate line item by itself. So the health insurance increase for fiscal year 22, 115,000 is shown, there's a second line item right below it. Maintenance department typically include a 3% increase for them because that is where all of our utilities are included. And we've been seeing some significant increases in our cost for electric, water, sewer, things like that. So that's where all of our utilities are paid out, right, right there in the maintenance department. You can see our engineering, planning and zoning. They are the ones who are responsible for collecting our building fees and our impact fees. So their total budget is 1.2 million. And like I said, when you include the impact fee revenue that they're collecting, they are more than self-supporting. Are there any other, there was one more that I wanted to show you, the regional jail fees. We hit a high, I think in fiscal year 18, of about 1.5 or 1.6 million. It returned back down to our normal trend in fiscal year 19 of 1.2 million. Legislation changed in fiscal year 20 that changed the date which the state starts picking up the jail fee tab from, to the date that they are convicted versus the date when they are sentenced. So that decreased our cost for jail fees significantly. I do anticipate that for fiscal year 21, it'll come in about where the budget is at 1.0 million. We may see some decreases that typically has spikes in the spring, especially since we've had so many COVID closures and people are, are kind of stressed right now. So I will have a budget revision for that line item later in the year. I do anticipate that for fiscal year 22, we should keep it flat at 1 million dollars. Our homeland security, that's the department I was talking about earlier. Their budget is about 241,000 and about 50% of that is reimbursed to us from the federal government. Our 911 communication center, we talked about that earlier. Our 911 fees are about 1.9 million. Their operating budget is 2 million dollars, but there are expenditures for our 911 center in other areas. So it's, although it looks like it's pretty close to self-supporting, just based on that line item, there are expenditures in other places that those fees can be used to cover as long as they relate to the 911 center. Our JCESA ambulance, the 2.75 million is the general fund contribution only. The ambulance fee collection is from a different fund and it's usually about a million dollars. So we contribute 2.75 million out of the general fund. And in addition to that, we fund about another million dollars out of the ambulance fee collection. So they receive about 3.8 million from, for funding.
Michelle.
Yes.
So since we're on JCESA and the ambulance. So I'm curious to know what we collected, we do FY '21, but what did we collect in total for ambulance fee?
We collect about 900,000 dollars.
Okay. And after administrative fees, which I'd like to understand that and what's actually given to the JCESA out of that ambulance?
They get all of it except for about 75,000 dollars. We have an ambulance fee billing specialist here out of the county commissions department. So they reimburse for her wages and salaries for paper, for envelopes, for postage. They reimburse the general fund for those expenditures and it's usually about 75,000 annually. The rest of it goes to ESA 100%.
And do we, do we collect 100% of those fees from everybody?
No, well, no, no, we have about a 12% uncollectible rate. So although we bill about 1.1 million, we only receive about 900,000.
And do we have a recourse for trying to collect those unpaid fees?
We have sent those unpaid fees to a collection agent or to a collection attorney. And he has sent out letters to them. It did increase collections by about, I think it was like 30 to 50,000 dollars. But we still have a significant portion of that uncollected. And when we go through the budget process, when we go through ESA, I actually do a whole separate presentation on the ambulance fee billings, how much we collect, how much has been paid so far, how much has not been paid and what are outstanding balances. We only collect about 90%.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll have more information on that later.
That's specific, yeah, there.
Quick question, also very brief, Michelle. That 2.751 million you have for ESA, do you have any idea the large part of that is staffing?
The majority of that is staffing. They have nine staff members that are paid out of the ambulance fee and the other 20, 20, 20 couple people are paid out of the general fund.
Okay, so just the other commissioners and the public's benefit, and I'm not advocating this at all, just for understanding purposes, some counties fund that staffing through the fee that ambulance. Jefferson County has made the decision for the past few years to fund a portion of the staffing through the general fund. The ambulance fee can only be used for staffing purposes. The money in this current line item doesn't have to be used just. The money in this current line item doesn't have to be used just for staffing. It could be used anywhere else in the general fund because it's just general tax revenue.
That's correct.
I understand that. But on top of that, the amount of increase to ambulance fee to make up a difference of two point seven million is quite substantial. So I think Michelle may have estimates for you, the other commissioners or the public, if they're interested. We're talking well over a hundred dollars for an individual. And then you factor in non-earner occupied and business and so forth. So just understand that two seven million in the general fund does not have to be earmarked for staff. Currently, it's been the decision of past county commissions to earmark it for staffing.
We also, a couple of years ago, started receiving about a hundred thirty thousand each year out of the capital outlay fund to purchase vehicles. So they so in addition to that two point seven million and the one million, they get another hundred and thirty, hundred fifty thousand out of the capital outlay fund.
I want everybody to understand where the money is coming from, how it's being used, and follow it. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes. Now, for a fire department, you can see in fiscal year nineteen, they received six hundred sixty-five thousand in direct payments to them. And then it increased in fiscal year twenty because that's when I started including the one point five million or nine hundred thousand dollars that they're receiving from the county for the ambulance fee billings that they keep for E S A staffing. Fiscal year twenty-one's budget was originally five hundred seventy-seven thousand. I will increase that by about a million dollars to reflect the ambulance fee billings that they're keeping. So I anticipate that they'll end clear twenty-one at about one point five million. And I kept that flat for fiscal year twenty-two at one point five million.
We're giving each individual firehouse, the taxpayers, was it roughly, is it eighty thousand or less? As far as the direct influx of taxpayer money?
Eighty-two thousand five hundred, I think.
Okay. That portion is the county commission from the general fund tax revenue. Seven firehouses are equally distributed eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars per year. I'm not trying to jump on your presentation, Michelle. I just want to make sure everybody's under aware of what's going on with this money. That money does not have to be put forth to the firehouses. Again, it can be used anywhere in the budget. It's general tax revenue.
Central garage, I include a six percent increase for them because that is where our fuel expenditure is. And in recent years, the fuel, the cost per gallon for fuel has increased exponentially. So they do have a six percent increase compared to everybody else having a two percent increase. And that's based on the historical trend. The health department's line item for eighty thousand dollars, that is strictly an in-kind contribution to them. We provide them with office space, utilities, and all their utilities at the Bardane Public Center. We actually provide that building for them. So that is an in-kind contribution to them. And I don't, I'm not sure if they'll ask for any more money in fiscal year twenty-two, but we'll go over that, you know, during the budget process.
I think they will.
Yeah, and my estimate with there that I've included for projected fiscal year twenty-two budget is just an estimate with with my two percent increase of trends. That does not include any of their requests yet. I've got nothing from departments. So let's see, parks and recreation, their number has decreased down to seven or twelve thousand dollars. About half, more than half of their budget is reliant on the hotel occupancy tax. The county contributes about two hundred fifty thousand, I think, to them on an annual basis to cover personnel for their office, office staff. And you can see that for fiscal year twenty-one, I've increased that to seven hundred eighty-five thousand. In fiscal year twenty-one, we did approve some stopgap funding, a one-time contribution of hundred sixty thousand dollars to help get them through the COVID pandemic. Arts and humanities, historical commission and visitors bureau, all of their revenue is reliant on the hotel occupancy tax. Libraries, we typically contribute three hundred thirty thousand dollars to them, and that is divided equally among all of the libraries, including the Charleston Library. I do, the projection includes twenty-seven point four million in expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two. And that gives us a net surplus of about thirty thousand dollars based on the operating expenditures I project or revenue that I project for fiscal year twenty-two. Again, that does not include any requests from the departments. This will be based on normal increases for merit increases, COLAs and supply and utilities, things like that. So depending on the request from the department, right now, we have a balanced budget. But until we get those requests, we don't know what the budget is going to look like.
That has no new staffing at E S A or anything factored into it?
Correct, nothing, nothing, none of that's in there for any departments. Now, the second, the third page includes our transfers to our capital outlay fund to the for the new two new commissioners in fiscal year twenty, because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, I didn't make any transfers. I made one transfer to the capital outlay fund of six hundred thousand dollars early in the year. Did not make any of the remaining transfer to the capital outlay fund to make sure that we were in a good position should we have any major revenue losses, which we did, or any major expenditures that resulted from the pandemic. So that fund balance carried forward into fiscal year twenty-one. And our funding policy requires that any fund balance from the prior year either be transferred to our rainy day fund or financial stabilization fund or to our capital outlay fund. The commission typically transfers that money to the capital outlay fund. And that's why you see that the budget for fiscal year twenty-one includes four point five million in transfers to the capital outlay fund. And I anticipate that by by the end of the year, I'll be able to make that contribution or that transfer. For fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, they included two point one million in transfers to the capital outlay fund to give us an ending fund balance of four point five million. Our financial policy requires that our fund balance be at least sixteen point six seven percent of operating expenditures. What that sixteen point six seven percent says that if we were to lose all of our revenue today and for the next month, like we did with the pandemic, we lost all of our video lottery revenue. We lost all of our table games revenue for at least a month. If we were to lose all of our other revenues for at least a month, we want to make sure that we can cover operating expenditures for the bare essentials for public safety, for the statutorily required departments for at least two and a half months. So if you take that sixteen point six seven percent, multiply it by twelve, it's two, it's about two point five months. Our fund balance, fund balance policy requires a goal of at least sixteen point six seven percent and a goal of about twenty percent. So anything between sixteen and twenty percent is what we want our ending fund balance to look like.
State is much lower, I think, right? With twelve percent, the state mandate?
The state mandate is ten percent, but they require that anything over that ten percent be transferred to the financial stabilization fund, which is basically a rainy day fund.
I don't suggest we go to the state level. I'm just saying, we're almost double that.
Yeah, the ten percent, I think, is way too low. Sixteen point six seven percent is actually Government Finance Officers Association recommended amount. And that's why we that. And it was actually implemented by our prior finance director, and it was a good management decision. Any questions about those projections? All right, so now, back to the budget charge items. On page two. Last year, we had a couple of budget charge items that are kind of carrying forward to the current year to do a thorough review of ambulance fee to ensure that the fee being charged covers the cost of providing services, review and adjust years to accommodate for the completion of a new manufacturing plant in Ranson, West Virginia. And we will definitely need to do that this year. The second bullet item is carried forward from the prior fiscal years, which is a new consideration, a new fee consideration, the implementation of a fire fee. In accordance with West Virginia Code seven dash seventeen for county fire, establish a fire fee, the volunteer companies must actually obtain a petition of ten percent of the registered voters. So until that petition is done, we will, we will not be able to implement a fire fee. I've included the amount for employee COLAs. I included point seven percent in my projections. However, the commission decided to do a larger amount. These are the costs of larger amounts of one percent, two percent, and three percent. And then last year, we began the process of reviewing the county administrative office building needs. And that was put on hold when the pandemic pandemic occurred. In order to build an office building, it might include debt issuance and the determination of funding sources for debt payments. But that was placed on hold due to the pandemic. It's it's on there because it's continuing from the prior year. And then other would be whatever you have to discuss or whatever you want me to relay to departments so that when they're preparing their budget, they won't, they'll know that they need to keep certain things in mind. So with that, I will turn it over to you for discussion. And if you can just provide me with some guidance on what you would like me to tell the departments.
I mean, I'll just, I'll start with other. I mean, I think we kind of touched on that earlier. Just short and sweet, sounded like what most commissioners wanted to hear. Big long drawn-out presentations aren't beneficial to either side. If you're keeping your budget the same, okay. If you're asking for a substantial increase, why do you want that substantial increase? And I guess just everybody, keep in mind, COVID is still ongoing. It's even worse now, it looks like, as far as cases. So I understand certain departments need more personnel and so forth. Be realistic in your requests. And I think the county commission will do its best to determine what we can honor and what we can't. The other commissioners, Commissioner Tab.
The only thought I have is when we're talking about reviewing the ambulance fee, I think we need to. And this is going to be a tough one to figure out. With the new Tyler system, we've come across properties that haven't been charged at all. So we need to come up with a policy to bring all that up to date and decide how much folks have to pay for something they've never been charged for until this year.
If they pay it all anyways. I mean, we lose a significant portion of that fee through the collection agency and lawyer. I mean, what is the collection rate after all the fees are incorporated out of thirty-nine dollars? Like fifteen or?
Thirty, we, we pay them thirty percent.
Okay, so not as much as I thought, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree on that. I mean, at the current fee level, if you're not paying the fee and the others are paying the fee, you should probably be paying the fee. As far as the the changing of the fee, I know the commission, since it imposed the fee or tax, it has been a contentious topic for years. There wasn't much traction in the past two years. I don't know if this commission has the muster to increase the fee or taxes during a pandemic when many of our residents are out of work potentially. I think that's a consideration that needs to be taken. From my standpoint, I think public safety needs to be a priority every year. It's consistently telling us we need more staffing. I think we need a serious look at public safety and staffing. That is not the place to cut corners, especially during a pandemic. That administering COVID, obviously, they have some funding from other sources. I'm real concerned that they're going to come back this year and ask for quite a bit of money. Years past, we've not funded them. I know Commissioner Tab, previously, you did fund them years ago, I think. Depending on their funding requests.
Because years ago, though, yeah.
Yeah. Do you recall how much?
No, I don't.
We saw Michelle's estimated revenue expense sheets. It basically balanced right now, per se. That could blow up on the budget if Port of Health comes and asks for three hundred grand or another entity, which I'm sure others are going to be asking for hefty increases. I think this budget session needs to be seriously geared towards public safety and public health. I I think that would be mimicked across the country at local and municipal governments based upon what's going on. It's going to be hard discussion, too. That's all I really have to say. Any other commissioners care to interject here?
Oh, yeah, I have, I do have a question for Michelle. How much, tell me again, how much ambulance fee money do we collect every year?
About nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand? And just curious, all the cities have imposed a one percent sales tax due to the home rule. If you ever did a calculation, see what that would be in the cabinet?
I looked at it a year ago. I I don't recall what the numbers were, but I can certainly prepare a projection for the upcoming budget presentations for you.
Okay, sounds good.
I think that would take legislation, obviously. Oh, wait.
Because we have impact fees, we're under local power effects, so we have the ability to do whatever the municipality has to do.
Oh.
We're the only county in West Virginia that can do it.
Keep in mind, I know the argument of the one percent is we're going to tax tourists. I don't know many tourists that are going to Walmart, maybe for a few camping gear isn't whatever. But majority of that money is probably going to come from the Walmart and the casino. So you can argue on both sides of that issue.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I live in Maryland, and I do all my shopping here because I do it after work or before work or at lunch. So it's going to get the shoppers here and the visitors here as well.
Well, and I'm just asking for what it would look like right now. Maybe, as you all know, the ambulance fee has been very contentious for a long time. And and I'm certainly not advocating a tax increase, but maybe the ambulance fee is a tax, maybe instead of doing the, just one, swap them out one for the other. Okay, so leaving me, I am not advocating for for an additional tax, but it might include add one, but will delete one, so.
I would love to ask it, Michelle. If it's nine hundred grand, I'd be shocked, but.
I don't think it's going to be nine hundred thousand. When I looked at it before, I want to say it was between two and five hundred thousand.
Okay. That might answer my question, that what my thought process, where I'm going to, very quickly. All right.
Anything further from anybody? All right, I mean, it's going to be interesting. Oh, I have one last thing, which is kind of off the side, and we're talking about legislators. Me personally, I like to get the, a lot of them are local legislators or in leadership roles. I think contacting them earlier and getting them here earlier versus like a week or two before the session starts is the best deal. I've talked to a few of them, and they've made that known that the leadership roles are taking a lot of their time off. I'm going to make sure we have enough time to put forth our ideas and see what's going on.
We usually have them in in November, but because of the election, we obviously didn't.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I will contact them, and we just want to do it in the afternoon at a regular meeting level.
It's up to anybody. And again, they can do virtual, too. I know sometimes we have problems getting people. I mean, you should be able to find the time for anybody to call in.
Do you want to schedule a special meeting or just want to do this part of the time?
What does everybody think? Do you think a special meeting is easier? Again, you can, I'd like to do a special meeting, see what their schedule is like, and we'll forward it. Thanks. Anything else?
Okay, and I just wanted to let the two new commissioners know that my door is always open. If you have any questions or you need to run anything by me or if you need a better understanding of how the budget process or how the budget works, please feel free to stop by my office anytime. Just just come on in, I'll I'll go over it with you one-on-one. You just need to let me know.
So, Michelle, real quick, so you're going to email us the department's budgets, is that what you said?
I'm going to email you the financial statements as of November the thirtieth, and I presented those last month. So I'll send those to you. That way you can kind of see what statutory are required to be funded and what and what revenue we have that statutory required to be used for that, for those departments. And what departments have their own individual funding and then what's not, but doesn't have a dedicated revenue source.
Okay, and then just as far as the volunteer fire departments, that I know we provide a huge chunk of money to. Did the nine-nineties go into detail as to all their revenue sources, including fundraising?
Yes.
Okay, can we get a look at those, too?
Yes, I usually, when we go through the budget process, I typically, I haven't updated them for the current year, but I can send you what I have as of last fiscal year so that you just get an idea of what it looks like. But we'll go into it in more detail also during the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, what do you anticipate, buddy folks, to be available? I really want to take a little longer on this.
We're a little late getting to the departments with the budget charge, but I'm hoping to have them, I mean, have it on the calendar for February the first. And that's what we've been shooting for the last couple of years. That was something that Commissioner Anosco implemented. Prior to that, they weren't distributed until later in the year because we did speed up the process for for Commissioner Anosco. But right now, they're on the calendar for February the first.
All right, I think that's prudent. I mean, don't overwork yourself if you need to take a few extra days. And that's all I have. Thanks a lot, Michelle.
You're welcome.
All right, let's uh, let's jump to Stephanie's thing real quick. It shouldn't take very long. County administrator reports and then the presentation.
So, and I'll just do the order. The last meeting, you did, you allow the prosecutor's office to carry over the maximum amount from from our policy, and you allowed them to do that through December of next year. Though they wouldn't get paid out, if they left, they would only get paid out for the maximums that are in our policy. I found out later that there were overages in other departments, these of them elected. And just for the new commissioners, we just implemented a personnel management system. Before then, it was, we were always on the honor system as to how much leave people had, how much they carried over. And also just kind of got the elected on board with following our leave policy. And I do believe that you are, it is the count, it's not true with all personnel policies, but specifically with the county commission is body able to provide leave to employees who are sick and ill. So, the payroll clerk in the clerk of the county commission's office contacted me and said there are overages in other elected departments. There are a few in my county commission departments. There was one employee, we asked them to use it down in the departments that I control. So it all the county commission departments, we asked them to use their leave down. Those did. There was one employee who knew that she was going to lose leave because she couldn't use it all. However, looking at the other elected departments, there are some significant overages. So I directed the staff in in the county clerk's office not to do anything with that and to ask them with you because you have done it from one department. So at the last meeting, you agreed to allow the prosecutor's office to carry over the maximum until December thirty first, twenty twenty one, and then we would cut, we would cut their overage. Our policy dictates that we cut the overage on June thirtieth, beginning of fiscal year. So our policy allows you to carry over the maximum until June thirtieth. And then on June thirtieth, if you have over the maximum accrual amount, we cut off that maximum accrual. But we only ever pay you out for the maximum rate. So let's say I had two hundred hours and I could only have a hundred, we would only pay you out for a hundred if I left or contributed. So, looking at the overages in the other elected departments, there's a significant overage in the sheriff's tax office. I didn't know if you wanted to extend that benefit to all county employees since you did it for the prosecutor's office, because now returning offices.
Yeah.
To be clear, I I I did not think you should have extended it to the prosecutor's office, but that is the work we do.
I think we did it because I I thought we were under the assumption that it was just that specific office. I think that's what.
At the time, I did believe that, and I knew that for the county commission departments, we were telling people to use their leave, and most people did use their leave. But I, there are overages in other departments.
That's fine, I guess.
And most of them are elected. Like, I will say the circuit clerk has all of them. I think.
I guess from, just an accounting financial standpoint, we are still recognizing that liability of potentially owing them at the max regardless if they go over. And if we're only paying to that max, it shouldn't change the liability. I guess it might because if they're gonna use all that vacation and we have to supplement staffing, we may run into an issue there.
So my thing is, and you're right, it doesn't. They're gonna continue to accrue leave. But you're right, it only costs us in what we have to do to fill a spot. And, you know, if the executive assistant is out for a week, we don't fill her spot. If the dispatcher is out, we fill their spot. And I don't think the dispatchers have, the dispatchers are not.
Do we, do we cap the accrual? So I know we pay out, so hypothetically, you pay out two hundred dollars or something, sorry, two hundred hours. Is there a max accrual carryover?
Yes, and that is what we have allowed. That's what, at the last meeting, the commission permitted the prosecutor's office to carry over more than the max.
Oh, with the agreement that?
With the agreement that we would not pay out more than what the maximum is in the policy.
And that you lose it all at year end of twenty twenty one if they don't use it. So from a accounting standpoint, financial standpoint, nothing really should change. From a staffing standpoint, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanna say that this is the first year that we've been able to do this, because this is the first year we've been able to see it, because we have a new system. So people are starting to freak out a little bit, because I don't think people actually took leave from them before, but now we're trying to do it.
So just out of curiosity, what is the max accrual that can carry?
It's depending on years of service. So for the deputies, and we had an issue with the deputies because they interpreted, they're allowed to carry over thirty days, and they interpret, they did that times ten because they work ten hour days, but they don't work ten five hour days, they work ten four hour days. So I, our policy says the day cannot be over eight.
Right.
So that should be two forty. We allowed them for this one time to carry over three hundred, but by statute, at on December, they're supposed to be down to thirty days. I think that's two forty. They've always used it as three hundred, and when we got into Tyler, we realized that there's a difference in how we're interpreting that. So next year it will be two forty. The the policy, and if I could pull it up real quick, I don't remember off the top of my head. I know that the highest tier is twenty nine days. So that's people who've been here for fifteen years or more. And that is based on, the policy is based on what the state accrual rates are. So and it also follows the deputy accrual rates as well, only we we set our our maximums lower than our level for for any county. And all those policies are on our website, but I can also email you if you're interested in seeing them.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, the, because when I did the cross reference with the committees and stuff, they did quite much on this online.
Okay, so yeah, you can just email the pop, the policy.
Okay.
I guess, I mean, there's two options here, essentially. We reversed the decision we previously made.
Right.
Which I didn't wanna kind of mess up. We based that decision on certain understandings that other departments, and I'm saying anybody did anything wrong, and stuff happens.
I think the people who have overages have the overages because the, at least the, there's one employee who has always carried an overage, and in extreme. The other employees who have overages have them because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and they were just required to work. So, and one of them is, you know, is in the county clerk's office, it was an election, and it was a different election we were running. So there are reasons that some of those employees have those larger accruals. And I think also this is the first time that employees are seeing us trying to, you know, cut off the overage. And I think we're kind of easing into that. The Tyler system has certainly, I think it's been a great thing, but it has certainly come with growing pains. And this is one of them. So if you did it for everyone, and and we'll send out a letter saying, this is the only time we're gonna do it, and we are gonna cut off your your accruals next year in December, just so you know, if you're over the maximum that you can be in your tier.
Use it or lose it, essentially.
Use it or lose it, and you will never get paid out over the maximum amounts in the policy, no matter what your accrual rate is.
I would find a lot of that. I I think that's a good decision, especially with COVID. I direct now to some other local governments, and especially a lot of the private sector has extended these things based on COVID. I guess, use your vacation. If you get it for a reason, you take a breather, etc. I mean, I'll make the motion that we allow all departments to carry over their vacation until December twenty twenty one, with the understanding that they will not be paid out past the max allowed in the policy should they leave. And their excess will be terminated December thirty first, twenty twenty one. So. Any discussion?
I should also say that our policy does say you will never get paid out.
Anything further, Commissioner Tab?
No, I'm good.
I just, I just think we just clarified that because it's a special circumstance.
Right, I will, yes, it will definitely include that you're never gonna get paid out more than, that's what's, what is in the county kitchen.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's done, and then?
Okay, and then the next one is the COVID nineteen policies. Those were enacted pursuant to the federal directive under the CARES Act. One of them is an expansion of ethanol A that eventually paid ethanol A. It's the only ethanol A that is paid, and it is for childcare. And then we have the COVID nineteen leave that we're directed to provide eighty hours of leave related to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and that is in addition to all the other leave that we provide. Pursuant to the federal law, we, those policies expire December very first, twenty twenty. In the, in the second round of stimulus that they just did, they provided an incentive for private employers to continue those benefits. We never got, we never had the mechanisms to get reimbursed through payroll deductions. We were not allowed to take those payroll deductions to reimburse us for providing the leave. However, we did get reimbursed from the, for them from the CARES Act. So when we were submitting our CARES Act request to the state, we were getting reimbursed for employees who use COVID leave or who uses the expanded ethanol A. There's nothing to prohibit us from continuing those policies. We don't have very many, I have, I think, two employees who have used it, who have used expanded ethanol A and are continuing to use it. One of, and we do have employees who are continuing to use COVID nineteen leave when they're testing positive and they can take quarantine. And we have been providing paid administrative leave if they use their COVID nineteen. Because in the spring, we were rotating workforce, and so we were forcing people to take their COVID or saying, don't come into work because we wanted to reduce the amount of days we would be exposed. So there are some employees who we made them take it in the spring, and then they later tested positive for COVID in the fall or in winter, so we have been providing paid authorized leave if someone tests positive for COVID and they're out of their COVID.
So there is no reimbursement to this point for any of that?
There have been reimbursement, yes, and we've gotten reimbursed for all of that through December.
Not now.
But now there will be no reimbursement. I do not think that we'll be able to apply for that now.
Should we temporarily extend it and then have Michelle look into this and see what the financial burden is to extend it through Q one?
Yeah. That's what I was gonna say, just to you, is that we look at it.
Thirty days. You want, can we, I don't know how long, Michelle, if she's listening still, how long it would take her to look at the financial impact of extending it for a quarter?
Okay.
And what we, the historical data on what we've paid out and been reimbursed for versus what we could pay out and not be reimbursed for?
Okay.
I mean, I'll move that we extend it for thirty days and reassess it at the first meeting in February, which is February fourth, so.
And just to be, just to be clear, if we rescind either, and they're, they're written in the same policy, but they are separate. I mean, they're related with that. So one is expanded ethanol A. We did not, we did not have very many employees to commit into that. I do have a request in for this coming week, but I think that employees' child would be returning to school because the schools are opening on January nineteenth. And then for the COVID nineteen leave, if we rescind that policy, people will have to use their sick leave. No, our policies are very generous. Our sick leave and vacation policy, our rules are very generous. But they will be forced to use that leave if they're told to quarantine. So that's what we're doing right now. I mean, it's it's up to the mission. I'll have, we'll send it for thirty days, and I'll have Michelle do an analysis of what it would cost to do the COVID nineteen, and also provide the the paid administrative leave, if someone is out of the COVID.
I I think that's prudent. It gives Michelle enough time to reassess it. I can't foresee the financial impact for thirty days being that substantial based on historical data. Anything from other commissioners on that? This is, the motion's already on the floor. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, pass it unanimously, so it's extended until February fourth and reassessed at that point. All right, does anybody need a five minute break or a drink of water or something before, Nathan? All right, let's take a, let's take a five minute or eight minute break, we're back here. Is there anything in open session?
I, I am going to recommend that the commission enters into executive session to receive legal advice regarding all the issues on that list here. I I do want to to give you information about where we are and my recommendation.
It has been any action after executive session?
I don't believe so, not today.
Okay, so I'm gonna move we go into executive session to seek legal advice on all the agenda items outlined on agenda number thirteen with legal counsel. We also will take a brief break before entering executive session and reconvene at one twenty five P M.
Why don't we just go into session right now?
All right, there's a second?
Yes, a second, that goes.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
I need you to call in to some of the questions.
Here you go.
She probably fell asleep about case number four.
I am away.
It's away.
Are we good?
Yeah, you're good.
All right, we're back.
I'm moving to the executive session.
Second, any discussion? All fair and motion say aye. We're in regular session. There's no action coming out of executive session today. We're pretty much done with the agenda. A few administrative things. We need to schedule an impact fee hearing. Potentially for Thursday evening, January 28th. Is that okay with everybody? 7:00 PM, virtually. We'll get all that information out to the public well in advance. Hey, what else? I think that was it, wasn't it? I know we have kind of commission reports. Did you give commissioners to any existing city commissioners from the previous term have any updates to the boards? Commissioner Taff?
I was just at the fire and rescue Tuesday night. They are moving ahead with pursuing a fire fee.
Okay. Anything further?
No.
Okay, I, I really had too much. I only saw the waste authority met. They're just renegotiating their contract with Waste Management. And looking to get that new trailer fixed from someone's opinion. So other than that, that's all I have.
You have one year notice to attend to notice the point planning commission.
Yeah, that's advertised right now.
We put that on there when we advertise.
Um, I think there's a mistake.
There is a mistake. We said we had two terms. We only have one. But I don't think that will happen. We'll get people who apply if they want to be on planning commission. So I don't think it's going to impact people applying. But yes, we, she, when she advertised it, she thought there were two. There's only one in the jurors.
Because I, I think, you know, we're going to, the one we're talking about is mine. If it expires in March of this year. And if it expires in March of this year. I would just assume if we could just go in some, uh, uh, advertise with that expired term, unexpired term. And then, and also the one preceding that.
Right, well, that's, so that's what I was gonna ask you to do when you win it. It's just a point for the March. A point for the unexpired term and then also for the term that begin in March.
Yeah, because there's, there's a point somebody for a month. You know? Okay.
There's a lot to advertise.
We can do that. We can, okay. All right. That we don't, we have to advertise or anything like that?
We don't, maybe I could ask her, I think we run that for two weeks. So maybe I could ask her to update the advertising and it says, and update. And, you know, it will be the unexpired term being for the whole jury.
Okay. Good idea.
And then this ESA term, that would be Commissioner Jackson's former citizen spot?
There is, and there's another citizen spot that we've been.
Okay, so there's two opening ESA citizen spots. All right. All right, anything else further? Commissioner Tab and other commissioners staff? All right, move me adjourned. Second. Second. All favor of the court. We're adjourned. See you later, Jane.
Sorry to take so long to explain.
So I, I wanted to chat.
No, I know.